And we are now live.
Good evening and welcome to the Exeter Township School District's May Board Voting Meeting. My name is Dave Hamburger. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. Welcome folks who are joining us live streaming through YouTube. And we have with us on our on display on our Zoom conference, our board members as well as some of our administrative personnel. This evening's board meeting will feature some presentations. We'll be voting on a number of issues that were reviewed last week at our board workshop meeting. And we'll be using a consent agenda and I'll describe that in a little more detail once we get into that portion of the meeting. I'm going to start off first with just a roll call so that we can identify board members who are present for the meeting. Mrs. Guidish.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Stratton.
And then.
Mr. Japina. Dr. McLendon.
Present.
Dr. Hamburger.
Present.
Mrs. Wilson.
And then.
Mr. Aaron's.
Present.
Dr. Herring.
Here.
Mr. Fidler.
You're.
Eight board members are present.
Thanks, Mrs. Guidish, and and I'm thinking maybe Mr. Japina will be joining us at some point. So when he he does join, then we'll have to recognize that he'll be our ninth member of our board for voting purposes. Before we get started in our meeting tonight, I do want to turn to Dr. Phillips and Dr. Winters and just ask if there are any updates that they'd like to provide at this time regarding the circumstances that we're experiencing, any plans going forward, anything else that would be important for us to know in terms of updates.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Not a lot has changed since my report last week as far as the back to school reentry plan. A little bit more information came out this morning in my Zoom conference with the rest of the superintendents. The state has chosen a research consulting company called Mathematica. That is the group that will be working on the reentry plan with the Pennsylvania Department of Education and sort of wrangling all the research into one one process. The task force has been in place now for about a week. Primarily, they've been meeting to answer potential questions, so they've been bringing their own questions to bear and then working on bringing those answers to that. They are beginning to develop programming. And they're actually looking at other state plans as well. Maryland has produced the plan, Ohio and a few others, and they are looking to those for some guidance. As far as countywide goes, at this point, we are starting to process some of the information that's coming down from Harrisburg. But again, we're still waiting on the guidance that's supposed to come out on June 5th to really kick off where we're going. I did participate in an additional Zoom conference of more of a national flavor this afternoon. Some Northwestern PA superintendents were on it, but also some superintendents from as far out as California. We're all experiencing the same issues, funding issues caused by the coronavirus. Reopening, what is that going to look like? The issues around graduation and what that looks like. So we are not alone as far as the country goes. We're all experiencing the same issues. We are all looking at the same possibilities for reopening. But at this point, it's really just too far out to make any real concrete decisions. So you know, the options of what it will look like, there are many. The idea of will we be back early in the fall? You know, one of the the superintendents, not in our state, but in another state throughout the idea of not starting the school year until later. Sort of moving everything and bumping all the way back to June 30th and giving us another month of summertime, if you will, to try and give this, you know, a vaccine or something to, you know, program to be developed. But at this point, it's really too early to make any more decisions. Other than that, June 5th date, we should be getting a lot more information and then locally we will be developing what reopening would look like.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Dr. Winters, anything from your perspective from where you sit?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. You know, first of all, you know, as we've said every week and I'll continue to say again, our teachers are doing a fantastic job putting together lessons that are meaningful and just connecting with kids and making sure that student needs are being met. They're working really well with building administrators and our coaches, Dan Wilczek, Missy Dow, Karen DiNunzio. So we've got great things happening there. Our plans are fully underway with regard to summer flex PD and those different options for teachers, making those options available. Still doing curriculum work as we've done in past summer. Allowing departments and grade levels to have time over the summer to work on transition work to help identify what some of those gaps may be, grade level to grade level heading into next year. And then as a teaching and learning department, we're beginning to take a look at what would the components be of a plan if if we're red in August versus if we're yellow versus if we're green. So good things are happening, things are moving in the right direction. Teachers continue to do a great job.
Thanks, Dr. Winters. I know there's been a lot of conversation and and questions about graduation. Is there any, are there any updates that you fellows want to provide us in regard to any evolution of plans relative to graduation?
Well, at this point, the governor reiterated that we are in code red or the red status, the red phase. So right now, virtual graduations are going to be the norm through most of the districts in the county, save one, I believe. There is some discussion on what the safety of a parade would be right now. I've had some conversations with Mr. Campbell. We're going to have some conversations with our local police. We're collaborating as a county as far as superintendents go to sort of weave our way through the language that the governor has sent to us. So again, a little early for that to to make a decision. But as of right now, June 4th would be the parade. And June 5th is it'll be the the unveiling of the virtual graduation. And then, of course, there's dates down in later in the summer. Phases willing to allow for some more in person, if you want to call it that, celebrations.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks, Dr. Phillips, thanks, Dr. Winters, for those updates. I think we can then move into our our meeting agenda. And one of the first items we have on our agenda this evening is Mr. Matt Hathaway. Welcome, Matt. And Matt is going to be giving giving us an update on the TIPS program and where we are for the summer. Matt?
First of all, thanks, everybody. I apologize for wearing a jacket. I'm actually outside right now. When you have a ranch home, every meeting is a family meeting and my daughter's bedtime is coming up, so I'll be outside. So thank you very much for the opportunity to come to present about teachers in the parks. Nobody expected a summer like we're going to have this year, and we held that as long as we could to make a determination of what summer might look like. When COVID-19 hit, we realized pretty quickly that there was a new gap that was coming. And so our team got together and tried to put together a program that might help students in Exeter transition between the closing of schools and the startup of the Exeter Plan. And so we launched a free program for children called Tips Live, and we had 12 Exeter teachers that stepped up is to our children, really done an effort to help. I think everyone at that point was just trying to share their gifts and we tried to share ours at that time. And what we ended up really doing is piloting a a new program that we could utilize this summer. We we weren't expecting to have to, but we it looks like that's our only opportunity. I'll start by saying that nothing is going to replace the face to face instruction that we we are used to with our children. The heart and soul of summer learning for me is the relationship and the rapport that a teacher on a blanket can build. And we're going to have to try to find ways to do that virtually. And so Tips Live is a synchronous program, so children are going to be in a specific class with a specific teacher. We're suggesting that we drop the student ratio to one to 10 because we need to dedicate those first, you know, five, 10, 15 minutes of class even, really just in rapport building and, you know, focus on the really human lens before we even attempt to dive deep into into the instruction. We're suggesting that students can either meet two or four times a week like we had done before. But in the feedback from our pilot, the teachers were saying that 45 minutes, maybe an hour max time in a class with children is about as much as you can do effectively. And so we're going for our same approach, where less is more, so we're going to hyper focus on the transition standards, the key standards that a student might need the transition. I I had a really interesting conversation with the National Summer Learning Association and and everyone's asking, well, what happens now? You know, what does a what does a six month gap do to kids? No one knows. No one knows, but they know it's not good. And the best analogy I heard through that conversation was like this. And it compared it to concussions and maybe not a great comparison, but in in the first hit that you would get that concussion you easily recover from. And then the second one is a little worse and the next one is worse. And over time, the the problem with a slide like the summer, you know, really pre K through 12. It's to a point where you have to change yours because of it, you know, it affects literacy, it affects mathematics. And I guess the only answer I would have to this board is it's going to compound. And if we can't find a way to reach our children, we're not going to make this, we're not going to make up this gap and our standards aren't written to adjust. And as part of this plan, I know that the district's been working incredibly hard to think about what the transition will look like back to school. When just a month or two ago, we were talking as a board about the possibilities for this summer and a realization came up that communities and schools of Pennsylvania might not be able to subcontract the service like they usually do. And our kids need summer more than ever. I I hope we can agree on that. Summer summer learning is going to be more important than ever. So we really just sat down as a tips board and asked ourselves, well, what can we do to to get in this game here? And so we just kind of pulled out all the stops and we wanted to present to the board tonight to talk about our plan and what we need in support. First thing I want to tell you is that we've increased the amount of title funding for the district from the IU by $2,000 for a total of $7,000. We also have the 5,000 that the district budgeted. And that $5,000 makes a total of $12,000 that the district can use to pay for children that receive title funding to be involved in the programming. Essentially, what our board decided was in order to make this work, we're going to have to step up as an organization and take a risk. And because we don't have CISP A this year because of COVID-19, and I honestly think that they were you know, willing to work with us for a few years to get on our feet. And we're deciding to take this risk and what we're what we'd like to offer is to take on that entire contract. So essentially, teachers in the parks would be responsible for everything. We've developed the advertising. We were trying to adjust our curriculum to meet this new gap. We would be responsible for all the liability, you know, the collecting of all the hiring information. Industry to say you have a summer program right now, if this is something that you can support at this time. And so we've rewritten the contract that the district had signed with communities and schools of Pennsylvania before. And we can send that over. There would be no increase in funding to that contract. And with the additional $2,000 from the IU, it would actually be a reduction. We are still waiting to hear back from some districts on their summer plan, so we we want to promise that 7,000, but you know, in the event that there's extra funds, we always push them towards Exeter as we has have in in years past. So in addition to our synchronous part where a child would come on, you know, have a specific teacher for that time during the summer in a group of 10, we're also suggesting an asynchronous time. We want to increase the amount of time that children can participate. So we're suggesting asynchronous STEM music, art and PE classes as well. So a student could go on for a literacy class. They could then, you know, on a time convenient, jump onto an art class this summer or jump onto a STEM class this summer. And and really, we're willing to. It's live a possibility, so we have the we have the infrastructure, we have the training, we have the registration ready to rock and roll. We have everything that the program needs to implement it. The only change from our pilot was we're going to be charging families that can afford. And we're going to be offering grants to those who can't because we're actually going to be assigning classes this time. So just thank you. We've had, we had a really great 2019. Nobody expected this, but just to give it the board an update. From last year, 2019, we received a national award from the NEA for teachers in the parks for teaching excellence. We then had the honor in 2019 of hosting a summer summit where we hosted the Deputy Secretary of Education and we also hosted Senator Judy Schrank and the CEO of the National Summer Learning Association, Erin Dworkin. Thank you to this board for allowing myself and our new employee, who you know, Julie Klein, to go to attend a conference on summer learning in Atlanta, Georgia. And then really the the culmination of my year with this new learning was the opportunity to present at the US Senate and really just share Exeter's message that all children deserve access to summer learning. I know I've thrown a lot at you. I I don't know how interaction works with an online meeting like this. But that's that's the plan and we we think it's a solid plan. It is far from perfect. Our pilot had a lot of kinks and we're anticipating a lot of kinks in technology. The big things that we need from you, help in advertising, you know, allowing your reading specials to really target the children that need it the most. You know, allowing the teachers to send out a message or advertising on their the remainder of their online classes to help promote this. We're going to use every technology effort to make it happen. And our other ask to really make this happen is if there's an opportunity for children to keep their devices this summer instead of collecting them preschool year. It would be really great to to have those available. Our our big concern in scheduling is if you have children from one family in multiple grade levels, you know, they might need multiple devices to meet the only time schedule we can provide them. So questions and conversation. And then just again, thank you to everybody for listening here.
Matt. I'm curious to know if the summer session, are you planning on having this as an in person session or will this be a virtual session?
It's going to have to be virtual. The difference between what we're doing now in classes and what we would do this summer is they would be synchronous. So that teacher will be live in front of those students so that we could build rapport and really answer questions immediately as we would do in a classroom. We just, we just talked to the township and it's likely they will not have their summer programming. We just talked to the pool and they're not sure how they're going to allow, you know, if even if you go to yellow groups of 25 socially distancing in a pool. And we just thought it was best, this is what we could plan for. I do not believe that it's better than face to face, but I think it's the next best option we have.
So in other words, the kids will be at home and the teacher will be in his or her home, is it?
That is correct. So a family would sign up for a specific time. That teacher would make the class available, let's say 10 o'clock. They would go on for that synchronous part of the lesson, have asynchronous options. And then the classes will also be recorded and archived just for that class to see. So if a child can't make that class that day, they can go in and and try to make that up in an asynchronous way. I don't think that has as much value, but I think it has more value than doing nothing.
Right. Another another point, I was very glad to hear you talk about the I thought your concussion analogy was was very good about the fact that we're going to have two slides. We're going to have our summer slide and the slide that's going on right now because of the pandemic. There were, I circulated a study to the board and to the senior administration. There was a story about the study in on CNN's website. And the the authors of the study, there were two education scholars said that the the COVID slide, particularly in in the area of mathematics, could be devastating. And then you throw on top of that the summer slide and our kids could show up in September with some of them with with real deficits. The analogy that I've drawn is that it's sort of like if if there is a second wave of COVID-19, that will be occurring at the same time that the seasonal flu begins in the fall. So we're going to, we may have two epidemics to worry about from a medical standpoint, not just one. Similarly, as you pointed out, is the COVID slide. So I was just, I was very glad to hear you mention that because that was going to be my first question. What are we, what are we going to do to mitigate the effects of this of this double whammy, as CNN called it?
If if I could just respond, I I have. I don't. But I think that they're simply applying the decades worth of summer learning research to the COVID-19 pandemic. I I have never been, I have never been more concerned for our children in a medical way. I have never been more concerned for our children in a social emotional way. I have never been concerned for the masses in the psychological effects that this could have on a home with parents not working. But as far as the academic piece goes, every summer we do this, you know, for three months, and it just seems to be an accepted norm. The academic piece, I think with districts on board, there is a solution and and Exeter has really stepped up through our coaches, you know, Dan, Missy and Karen, through our administrators that are making great decisions. But for some reason, we we still hang on to this idea that if we get to June, they'll be fine. I don't believe that at all. And I I hope that in some way, you know, this is a an eye opening experience to what a lot of families experience every single summer. And I I think in the fall, we're going to have to be very mindful. But we're hoping to transition students to is the levels that they left off right now, you know, so summer is maintenance. However, there's going to be a deficit that's going to be have to address by adjusting the standard. If a fourth grade student in my class is coming in with less of a skill set, we're going to have to go back and adjust for that. And I think it's going to be a compounded effort over many, many years in order to get back to the standards that we saw before.
Right. I just want to dovetail onto something you said that yes, the the authors of the study give a lot of credit to all of the learnings we've learned over the years by doing summer programs. Their point was simply to echo what you said, it's just going to be two times or 2.0 or however you want to phrase it because of the because of the pandemic. But just glad to glad to hear you acknowledge that. And it sounds like you're you're ready to to mitigate whatever the effects are.
You know, it was interesting in the conversation with the NSLA, the National Summer Learning Association, the question was posed, if we actually thought was best for our kids, would we still encumber? And you know, their question was if we had that opportunity, would we fight for summer learning or for a system that didn't require it? And you know, it's just an interesting thought, not in support of anyone in in particular schedule. But to your point, yes, I I think summer is going to be more important than ever. And if tips can be a part of supporting Exeter, we're on board.
Great. Well, thank you very much for what you do for our kids. Matt, I had a quick question. You know, currently with our online instruction, you know, virtually all of our kids have an opportunity to participate or are participating and are receiving instruction. What's your capacity? I know it. I know in the past, I mean, obviously you haven't been, you haven't had enrollment from all the students in the district, but you know, how much, how many students can you accommodate through through your program?
We we think in capacity, we could, we could take four to four to 500 students. We are focusing on pre K through six, but there have been new opportunities and reach out from secondary teachers and it's just not my specialty. And if that's something the district's interested in, we can certainly talk about how to include them. There was talk about, you know, AP summer requirements, you know, for people that have prerequisite classes, you know, there was a question about remedial, you know, SAT prep, you know, name a subject and there was a discussion about it. Our focus that we're presenting tonight is really in that pre K through four, but an inclusion of five, six into transition to seventh grade. And we we think four to 500, but we're also going to be strict about that ratio, one to 10, because online the planning takes a lot of time and the it takes more time to do an online lesson, I think. And that was the feedback from our teachers and a lot than a face to face lesson because you can go and adjust and tweak. But you know, as long as we can keep a shorter schedule and run a teacher a few times a day, I think we could, we could, we could handle probably up to four to contract is written for 100, just so you know.
It's just written for how many?
300, as in all the other years, we didn't want to change anything and throw anybody for a loop. It's the same contract that we wrote, Dave. It just is has teachers in the parks accepting responsibility for the liability and the hiring.
So if if we were to exceed the 300 in the contract, are there additional costs that the district would incur?
Well, we we did it on a per pupil expenditure. And relatively speak, we've never done that. But I think the number and and correct me if I'm wrong, historically has been roughly $84 a child is how that breaks down as far as the district contribution, the families contribute $90 per child. The district can use those title funds to pay for that $84 a child. And in the event that we're very successful in this, I I don't know if we'll be successful in this because we've never done it. We have a feel for the face to face. But in the event that we're over, I would hope that the district could contribute that additional 84 a child just to offset our very real costs.
Any other questions for Matt? So Matt, we can anticipate a a a contract that we'll be able to to see and review and we'll have a workshop meeting in June and we have a voting meeting in June. I'm assuming the timeline would is acceptable in terms of when you'll need your information back from the board.
Yes, we we plan to start classes on June the 22nd. We waited for the governor's announcement for starting to open before we made a decision. So this is our fault in the delay. I hope you all understand. We, if there's a decision that can be made in the meantime, we could obviously run registration before classes start, we could start advertising right away if the general feel of this board is that's acceptable. And in the event that that contract wouldn't be agreed to, it would just be a matter of refunding our families.
Matt, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it, very nice job. And we'll look forward to seeing the contract and and possibly, you know, we may maybe want to see at the workshop meeting too, if you're available.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Go Exeter.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, I think we'll move on in our board meeting. And our next actually presentation is Dr. Winters and he'll he'll be giving us an update on our virtual programs, Dr. Winters.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. What I would like to do this evening with regard to virtual programs is talk with you about some successes that we've experienced during over the course of the 1920 school year, a status report in terms of where we are currently. Some of the obstacles that we anticipate facing as we move forward and our future plans. Joe, if I could have the next slide, please. I think it's very important when you look at our virtual programs and where we are to start with with a compelling why, why it's important that we offer them, why it's important that we do this. And I'm a big fan of Will Richardson. He's, he's a big guru in the ed tech realm. And when I saw this quotation from him, I thought it dovetailed nicely with some of what we're experiencing in the pandemic right now. This is a very challenging moment for educators. Our children are headed for a much more networked existence, one that allows for learning to occur 24/7/365. One that renders physical space much less important for learning, one that will challenge the relevance of classrooms as currently envisioned and one that challenges our roles as teachers and adult learners. I think the pandemic has brought to light that moving forward, we're going to have some different things that are going to be the new normal. And there's going to be somewhat of a necessity to be able to look at what kind of online learning options we have and making those different options available to our students. Joe, if I could have the next slide, please. So tonight, I'll do a review of this past school year, the senior high specifically, some things that went really, really well. We'll do kind of a State of the Union status report. Some of those challenges that exist to making things effective moving forward, I'll share those with you. And I'll give my future plans, my vision around any time, any place, any space, learning and what that could look like. The next slide, Joe. So in terms of successes, I need to first start with some teacher shout outs. And I think it's very important as part of this meeting that I publicly say something about the seven high school teachers. And I think it's very important as part of this meeting that I publicly say something about the seven high school teachers. That have stepped up this year to really serve as senior high online teachers and have done an amazing job. Anne Bellatier, our online English teacher, Todd Wegman, our online math teacher. Brandon Ziegler, our online social studies teacher. Mariana Lake and Jill Rudy are online science teachers. Chris Smith, our online phys ed teacher and Virginia Gonzalez are online Spanish teacher. Those seven folks, there aren't enough superlatives to talk about them. Online learning was, was brand new this year when we started our virtual academy. It was a brand new model, purchasing content from the outside, using our teachers to do it. They've been positive all year long, jumped in right out of the gate, were willing to try anything that was put before them. Fought through the obstacles, didn't get down and they're to be commended. They've done amazing work this year and the success of the program at the high school is due in large part to their efforts and I wanted to acknowledge that publicly. One of, but hang on Joe, sorry, you know, one of the reasons that. A virtual academy is very important is from the cost standpoint. And so I wanted to talk a little bit with you about numbers. Currently, our cost per pupil for a regular education student in Exeter is $12,375. In our virtual academy this year, we have 15 full-time Exeter Virtual Academy students. They're all regular Ed. If we didn't have a virtual academy. And all of those students ended up going to a cyber charter. That would be $185,625 that the district would have to pay for through our costs. However, because we were able to have these students do our virtual academy, those 15 students. With our senior high teachers and edge annuity courseware. And in some instances, some edge annuity electives taught by edge annuity courses. The cost per student is $1,400 compared to 12,375. Times 15 students at a cost of $21,000. So if we just look at those 15 Exeter Virtual Academy students in 1920 alone. By them not going to a cyber charter, we saved the district $164,625. Which I think is substantial when we talk about budget reduction and we talk about the impact of teaching positions and those different kinds of things. And really, the biggest thing that a virtual academy does, to use a medical analogy, is it provides a tourniquet. In the very, very first year, it stops the bleeding. You don't have kids rushing out the door to go to cyber charter schools because we have something in-house that we can use. Another real success in the first year has been on the administrative end. In addition to the teachers who have been fantastic, our administrators have been as well. Tom Campbell, Maggie Wright, Jason Dean at the high school have been very supportive about making this work. And working with the school counselors to ensure that the needs of these students are met in our technology department. Joe Way and his team, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Dan Wilczek. Who even though we don't have an administrator that fully supports the virtual academy on a day-to-day basis. Dan has some experience in this area from previous roles and has stepped in and has been doing a tremendous amount of work on a day-to-day basis. To support the work of the teachers in online. So the administrative support of this program at the building level and district level has been fantastic. Another great success in the first year has been around growth mindset and adaptability. Our online teachers have remained open about everything. They've adapted no matter what the circumstances. And they've had a growth mindset to say, this is going to continue to get better. We're committed. We're going to make it better. We've developed online teaching skills this year. Those seven teachers, we've done substantial professional development with them. Some through PD provided from edge annuity, some with Dan and our other coaches. And that's been a big success and just our professional development overall and capacity building. All seven of those teachers, they were great teachers before their experiences doing online learning and they've all become even stronger as we've built that capacity. Next slide, Joe. So to give you a status report in terms of where things currently stand. We have 15 full-time Exeter Virtual Academy students. Those are students who their entire schedule is comprised of online courses. The vast majority of those courses are being taught by Exeter teachers. Some of the electives typically one to two and a typical student are taught by a teacher provided through edge annuity. We have another 42 students that are doing part-time online option, which means it's one particular. Course that is built into their schedule that they're doing online. It's typically online PE or Spanish. Those seem to be our two subject areas that we've leveraged most often in online. To break it down a little bit more for you in terms of courses. We're currently teaching 16 courses online through our virtual academy. English 10, 11 and 12, geometry, trig and financial math, biology and chemistry. World history, 1450 to present, civics and government, psychology, foundations of personal wellness, lifetime fitness. Spanish two and three and AP Spanish. So those are all courses during the 1920 school year that we've had the capacity to be able to offer to Exeter High School students. And they're all taught by one of those seven teachers that I mentioned on my previous slide. And then we have another 20 courses, electives that are general electives, things like. You know, intro to business, world religions, just different kinds of electives that aren't offered in the building. That are taught by edge annuity teachers. And we have a couple instances where if we have a student in the virtual academy who's looking to play sports. At the next level, in order to do that, you need to ensure that a student's courses and transcript are NCAA approved. The only edge annuity courses that are NCAA approved. Are if you use their content taught by their teachers. If you just use their content, you lose that NCAA approval component. So we do have one or, one or two students that are. Using our virtual academy, but all their courses are taught by edge annuity teachers because of that NCAA piece. And then we have a couple instances where there's some overage. For example, the course cap for online PE is 25. We had about 35 kids that needed online PE. So the additional 10 were taught by an edge annuity teacher because the language in our current MOU. Puts a cap on no more than 25 students that an Exeter teacher can have at one time. So that's a little bit of background in terms of where we are, you know, current operating right now. Next slide, Joe. So in order to continue to have effective virtual programs, there are some obstacles and some challenges that we do face. Staffing is one of them. You know, currently, the way the schedule is configured, the needs of our students. In the high school and teachers teaching different courses, there is limited teacher availability. Which, you know, dovetails into the second piece there, which is our current memorandum of understanding. We do have a memorandum of understanding with ETEA. It runs through June 30th. We have undertaken efforts to try to renew that MOU. For the 2021 school year, pre pandemic and post pandemic. Those conversations are ongoing. At this point, we don't have full support to renew that MOU. So until we get that MOU renewed and a new one in place. That definitely creates a limitation largely in terms of a dollars and cents from an obstacle and challenge standpoint. Because part of our cost savings is when we use Exeter teachers and edge annuity content. It's $90 a course. When we use edge annuity teachers and edge annuity content, it's $520 a course. Now. Still at 520 a course, times six courses, times number of kids. It's still cheaper than a cyber charter, but it's not as much of a cost savings as it could be if we were able to use our own. So you know, that, that MOU piece is an important piece and, you know, and, and, and an obstacle as we continue to move forward. And also interest level at the K to eight level, we, we've had tremendous interest from teachers. At the high school level, we're still trying to generate some of that interest at the K eight level. There is some currently at the junior high, K to six, we haven't had those conversations yet, so we need to, you know, build and kind of work through that. There are some obstacles related to digital content. No third-party content provider is perfect. Nothing replaces the curriculum that you have in-house that's been developed by your teachers. So if we have a student that does the virtual academy and they start out the year doing the virtual academy. And then they transition back into the high school setting. We do our best to align curriculum as best we can, but it's not a perfect match all of the time. Limited time and resources for development of schoology courses. We really want to develop more courses on schoology because it's our content that we can use. And then that transition is more seamless. That takes time. It takes a good year between training and work to develop a course. And there is a cost. It's typically about 100 to 150 hours to build a schoology course. Times $32 for curricular rate, there is an expenditure there. I will say that I believe that expenditure is absolutely worth investing in. Because I think the more courses we get built on schoology, the less we have to rely on a third-party vendor. And so the long-term savings is more substantial. And then one of the, kind of the buzz phrases right now, being in the pandemic. Pandemic plunge is something that they're using. It's kind of the summer slide associated with COVID-19. And Matt touched on it, you know, with his presentation related to tips live, but it is a very real concern. And, and so, you know, we have to be prepared and recognize that there may be an increased need for the Exeter Virtual Academy. And virtual options next year as there may be families who either they themselves have a child who's medically fragile. Or there's somebody living in their household that's medically fragile and they may say to us as a district. You know, next year, I understand you're putting all these plans in place to make the building safe and clean. I need my kids to continue to stay home and work online for these reasons. We want to be able to offer that. And so we have to talk through that and figure out what that's going to look like. And then how can we best leverage the digital resources that we have to address learning gaps? We know those gaps are going to exist this summer. Matt touched on it, Mr. Fiddler touched on it. And so, you know, that's, that's an obstacle and a challenge that we have to face and we'll face it head on. The next slide, Joe. So in terms of future plans. Anytime, anyplace, any space learning. I'm a big fan of movies. I love Back to the Future if they're, and I'm sure there are other people on the call and watching that grew up in the eighties. This was a very influential movie for me. And there, there's a line from that movie where Doc Brown, you know, says roads. Where we're going, we don't need no roads. And basically I put that picture there because my vision, big picture, long-term. Would be to be able to leverage our virtual academy in such a way. That our students could access it in a number of different ways. That, you know, that, that we can, you know, have a, you know, get to a point where if you look at my last bullet point there. Where we can offer face-to-face blended and online courses simultaneously. We're not there yet. It will take time to get there. But when I think about virtual learning, big picture, that's where I see us going. Where there's not a direct point A to point B roadmap. Where kids are more directly invested into their learning as the Will Richardson quote indicated. In order to get there, that's going to be more professional development on effective technology-integrated teaching practices. And we are very fortunate in Exeter to have Dan and Missy that can, that can help provide that training. It's a shift. One of my colleagues, Karen DiNunzio, heard from a peer of hers that right now we're living in what people are calling remote emergency learning. I really believe that as we shift into next year, it's not emergency anymore. It's going to be a new norm with some modifications. It's, it potentially could be more online learning. And so we need to be prepared for that. We need to develop a timeline on developing additional schoology courses. From a budget and financial standpoint, how many can we do per, per year? What is reasonable? Looking at expansion. Virtual academy is not just the need for the high school. We needed at our junior high level, we needed at our five, six building and we need to have it K four. And so looking at what does that expansion look like? Do we have teachers that have an interest in wanting to step out and take that leap of faith like the high school teachers did? Making sure that we maintain a collaborative partnership with ETEA on a revised MOU. For the length of the new CBA. I really believe that ETEA wants an MOU for virtual programs. I just think it's the timing of circumstances right now that have impacted some of those conversations. And so I'm confident that, you know, we can get that done in time and look forward to that collaborative partnership. And then like I said, that ability to offer face-to-face and blended and online simultaneously. Joe, the next slide. I started with a quotation and I wanted to end with a quotation as well. George Kurros is another ed tech person who I really respect and I read a lot. And one of his big books is called The Innovator's Mindset. And he was quoted as saying in that book, if we're going to help our students thrive, we have to move past the way we have always done it. And create better learning experiences for our students than we had ourselves. This does not mean replacing everything we do, but we must be willing to look with fresh eyes at what we do and ask, is there a better way? We would expect the same mindset from our students. And as educators, that question is the first step on the path to a better future for education. I really believe that in education, every time we have a crisis, and I think the pandemic falls into that category. Every crisis is also an opportunity. And there's an opportunity to use this pandemic to do education better in Exeter than we've ever done it before. And I think virtual programs are, are, are one piece of that puzzle. Next slide, Joe. Thank you for your time this evening. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that people may have.
Dr. Winters, I, I couldn't help, you know, thinking more about the MOU, you know, and, and the, the inability to get that. Approval from our association and. You know, obviously it's to, to have the instruction by our teachers for our students is the, is the, is the best. Way to provide instruction. But in the event that that's not achievable, if for some reason it's not possible, is there? Is there an option for contracting out for some of these services as opposed to going through? You know, the, the contractor ingenuity for the, for instruction. Could a third-party vendor provide the instructional services in lieu of? What we would hope to be our, our regular staff?
So, so edge annuity can provide that. They, they have an instructional services model. Where it's their teacher and it's their content. And it, it's, it's $520 per course. You know, for, you know, each student. So it is expensive. Not, not as expensive as 12,375 per student. But definitely more expensive than if we were using our teachers. So you know, that, that would probably be. The, my preference or recommendation simply because for our students that are returning to the virtual academy next year. It's, it's a program that they know. But there are other contractors out there that do similar things. When you, when you use an instructional services platform through a company like Edge annuity. You're just contracting for the online teacher and the content. There are programs like Brandywine Virtual Academy through Chester County Intermediate Unit that we've used before. There's Burke's Online Learning through our own intermediate unit. They're more of a. Comprehensive wraparound service, if you want to call it that. It's more expensive, but you know, you, you get everything. You don't just get the content. And the online teacher, you know, you get the tech support, you know, they, they basically do it all. It's kind of like, you know, one-stop shopping, you know, for, for virtual. So there are those options that are out there as well. They're more expensive, but they do exist.
And, and how are our teachers, you know, when, when our teachers do provide the service, are they compensated separately or is it integrated into their, their daily schedule?
We have some of both. So, so two. Two of our seven online teachers have it built into their schedule. So to where it's aligned directly in their schedule. That's the case with our English teacher and that's the case with our math teacher. The other online teachers, because of scheduling constraints at the high school. They all receive a stipend in the amount of $2,500 per semester. they all receive a stipend in the amount of $2,500 per semester in order to provide that service to the students. So each, each year, it's a new conversation with Mr. Campbell, Mr. Dean, and Dr. Wright around, okay, where's our flexibility in the schedule? You know, is it, is it still only two teachers that we can weave in? Can we increase that? And then each year communicating with each of the online teachers and saying, "Is this something you want to continue to do?" Because we want teachers doing it that want to do it. We don't want to be saying you absolutely have to do it. And so, you know, the, the ideal is always to have it built into their schedule. You know, for a, for a brick and mortar teacher to have one teaching line that's online, that's the ideal. But all the folks that did it under a stipend agreed to do that willingly. They were given the option, you know, a, you know, right of refusal if they didn't want to do it and they all chose willingly to do it.
Does the MOU then affect all of the teachers or the two that, you know, it's a part of their schedule? Would they still be asked to do it because it's a part of their schedule or are they affected by the MOU? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. The MOU really applies to all the teachers. Technically, you know, we could, we could certainly make a case that if we build it into a teacher's schedule, it's, it's managerial, right? In terms of, you know, just like a high school principal would assign any other teacher who's got a traditional schedule. This is what you're teaching during the, I mean, we, we could, we could technically do that. I would be leery of doing that simply because part of what helped this get off the ground to begin with is, you know, all the teachers that did it, did it willingly. And the two that had it built into their schedule, it was just simply because that's what the schedule allowed for. It wasn't that we prioritized those two over any other teacher. If we could have fitted into all seven, I would have done it in a minute. And so I guess my fear would be that if we say, you know, this absolutely, that, that then it, it, you know, it may affect the overall, you know, the way the virtual academy is perceived, you know, at the high school. And we want to see it as a positive and we want more teachers moving forward to want to continue to, you know, want to develop their skills in this area. And, you know, we don't want it to develop a reputation as, well, it doesn't matter if I want to do it or not, you know, Dr. Wares, Mr. Campbell are going to tell me that I have to and, you know, it is what it is. So, you know, I, I'll go back through and look at the language in the MOU. I, I think technically we could because it falls under managerial right, but I'd be concerned because it would be a little bit disingenuous because we did kind of start all of this on a platform of getting folks to volunteer to want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Phillips, I truly appreciate all the work that you did on this and I, I'm a strong advocate for this, this, this very much so.
I think you meant Dr. Winters.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Dr. Winters. I do appreciate it. And what I want, the question I have is, are we the only school district that's kind of doing this? Is there a way we can build maybe a catalog between all our areas of the Berks County to have maybe something where we can all kind of collaborate together to create a whole learning process?
Yeah, you know, you know, you know, here it's a, that's a, that's a great question. Actually, most, most of the districts in Berks County have something. They, they either have something that they're doing in-house like we are or they're, or they're using Berks Online through, you know, Berks County Intermediate Unit. You know, Dr. Phillips and I did have conversations at one point in time about, you know, what about, you know, saying to our neighbors, you know, Daniel Boone, you know, districts that are close by, you know, Boyer Town, we can offer these online courses. You know, what online courses can you offer that maybe we don't have and kind of, you know, mutually benefiting, you know, both ways? Which, you know, I think is a great idea. It's definitely something, you know, I'm interested in. It, it, it would be something that when we put together a new MOU, we would want to outline because it may necessitate larger numbers of students assigned to a, to an online teacher at one time. And, you know, we, we may have to look at a kind of, you know, what some of the CBA implications would be across districts, but you know, I would, you know, I would love to be able to look into that. And most districts in Berks County are doing something for virtual and, you know, we have similar situations now, you know, we've had, we've had Exeter students that have, that have gone to, you know, Ole for an ag program, you know, where the district has, you know, paid for the child to do that because we don't have an ag program here. So, you know, you know, we've, we've done things similarly in other areas. So, you know, there, there, there is an opportunity there to, to look, to look into that. So, yeah, I think it's a great suggestion for sure.
Yeah, I think without a doubt, there's going to be a high increase in these learning courses because of the COVID situation. Because there are some kids that may be immunocompromised and things like that that are going to be, you know, don't want necessarily heading back to the schools. So I think this is something that we really need to really focus on for, for the new year, you know, to get prepared for this because it's definitely going to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. And I think, you know, from my perspective, I, I recognize that there's a need. So I will say there, there will be a virtual academy next year. We will have something in place for our students that need it. It just may look a little bit different because of some of the challenges that exist with the current non-renewal of the MOU.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Patrick, could you just kind of establish quickly what that MOU is and what its contents really speak to quick? I'm not sure that we really got to unpack that a little bit.
So it, it touches on a number of things. Number one, it, it sets a limit that if you're serving as an online teacher, how many total students you can be teaching at one time? The limit that's currently set in the MOU is 25. It, it sets how many online, online courses an online teacher can facilitate at one time. Currently in the MOU, that number is three. It, it establishes what compensation looks like for a teacher that agrees to serve as an online teacher but doesn't have it built into their schedule, which is $2,500 per semester. It, it provides definitions for, you know, all of the important terminology. What do we mean as a district when we say online course? What do we mean as a district, you know, when we say, you know, synchronous versus asynchronous learning, like some of those kinds of things? It, it establishes provisions around when we start developing schoolology courses. How many hours to develop a schoolology course? What, what the rate of pay will be for those courses? How we communicate to all certificated staff that there's a opportunity to develop a schoolology course so that any teacher in the district with that certification has an opportunity to say, "Yes, I'm interested," as opposed to administration just handpicking somebody. And so, you know, those, those are some of the big highlights. It, you know, I know that it was approved by the board. You know, I know we have it attached to a previous board agenda. I believe it was in August when we had it approved. And so it, it goes through June 30th. That's, that's when the current MOU expires. And, you know, we did a one-year for two reasons. One, because we knew we were in the last year of a contract and two, because it was important to ETEA to kind of, let's do it for a year and let's see if it goes well. You know, let's, you know, and, and it has. And I think, you know, I think ETEA leadership would even say that it's gone well. And so, but typically when you have an MOU for something like this, when you develop it, you develop it for the lifetime of the contract. So, you know, you know, we, we would want our next MOU to be the same length of time as our next collective bargaining unit for ETEA. And, and the, and, and the first one only focused on high school because that's where we were focusing on in year one. Since we're looking at expansion, a new MOU would, we, we'd want to make sure we accurately addressed what it would look like K4, 5, 6, and 7, 8, so that we have that flexibility for expansion.
So if I, if I understood you correctly, and please jump in if I, I didn't get this. It sounded to me like the concerns that we've received from the association are not material to the contents of the MOU.
I would say that's accurate. I know in my communication with ETEA, I have not heard any specific concerns about, you know, we don't want to move forward with the MOU because we're concerned about this language at this particular number, you know, in the MOU. Those concerns may exist, but if they do exist, they've not been articulated to me at this point in time.
Well, maybe what maybe the board needs to do here is, is send a letter on behalf of the board. You know, whether it be a written communication or an email, one I don't think it really matters, but you know, I think what we've talked about here is that there's a real important piece to this. I think that not only do we want to continue building on the successes that we've had, but we want to make sure that we're also providing for this, our students in this unique way. I know, I think that you put up a pretty comprehensive list of courses and some of them I'd even be interested in taking now if you're willing to take post-college grads into some of these courses. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised what the issue is here. And I think that we'll need to dialogue with our association to figure that out because you know, I think that there are a lot of reasons that students may want to stay home from school. And then on top of that, you'll have high achievers and maybe students who are wanting to try something new that they're going to be able to explore things that they may not to in the building now or in the future. So I, I think that's really an important issue.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, Hunter, I think our, our data in terms of numbers, you know, bears that out. You know, when I, you know, you know, when I was involved with, with virtual programming in my previous district, after year one, we had 10 kids. After year one at Exeter, we have 42. And so, you know, I think what that indicates is that the interest is there. And in conversations that I've had with Mr. Campbell and also with the school counselors, I think part of the reason we've kept the numbers there is because we're trying to start slow. But I think once we expand and once school counselors have, you know, have the green light to be able to offer more courses to more kids, I think you'll see those numbers grow significantly, very, very quickly because virtual academy aside, I think there are a number of high school teacher, high school students that would love the opportunity to weave one online course into their schedule in such a way to create flexibility to be able to take another course, brick and mortar that they may want.
I know, I know just from my own part, in my own experience, one of my friends from college, her younger sister went to Brandywine Area School, Brandywine Heights Area School District. And she's now pursuing, I believe, an accounting degree to become a CPA at Penn State. And at the time, Brandywine did not offer AP Economics, micro or macro. And she was able to take both online because I think of the online offerings that they had. And I, I think it's just an excellent way that you get to expose students to things that we can't do in the buildings. And I think that we really need to highlight that. And I think that that's really critical because, you know, anything that we can provide to our students, especially in this way that's cost efficient, that's, you know, developed in-house, that we can even potentially contract with other districts to offer this service. I think that this is something really important that we want to double down on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One question and maybe a follow-up depending on the answer. Does, do all of our students have computers at home now?
Right now, every, well, yes, every, every student that, well, I'm back up a second. All of our students in grades five through 12 have a laptop that is district-issued. All students in grades K through four that needed one when the pandemic started have been provided one by the district. Some may be using their own personal computer, but every child has access to one.
And same question with about internet access.
So Service, Service Electric jumped in and provided free internet for new, you know, people that were new to Service Electric for three months. Just clarification, Dr. Phillips, was it free or was, or was there a cost?
It, it was free, but it was limited to the three months. So
That's what I thought.
You know, we're going to have to re, we're going to have to reconnect with them to see if they'd be willing to offer the same deal for the summer based on what we're trying to provide.
So is it fair to say, if I get questions and I've gotten them already, there's no digital divide here at Exeter?
You know, I feel like we've done everything we can to eliminate that digital divide. I, I mean, you know, for sure with devices right now and, you know, and also with internet. Now, as Dr. Phillips said, going into the summer, we're going to have to, you know, reconnect with Service Electric and see what they can do. But through the end of the school year, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Fiddler, there is not a digital divide.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fiddler, this is Joe Way speaking. We are also still receiving requests for laptops from students in need. And we're still receiving requests for internet. So we are still doing those operations to filling the, the digital divide that may exist or that may, we may be discovering. So we will be offering devices, you know, until everything is settled out.
So what I'm hearing then is if you're still getting requests, there are students who don't have computers then?
Well, I think that some of the, that what, some of what's happening is families are realizing the actual rigor of the work that they're doing. And they may have had one or two machines at home and it's just not working if they have multiple children and mom and dad need to use the laptop. So we've just been sort of backfilling this. Some people were very, very polite initially and said, "We have everything we need. We can, we can deal with it on our own." And so now the, just some of the realities, most of what these people are telling me is the reality is that they need a device, a separate device for their student to use. So we've been filling those needs.
Okay. So now there's, there's already at least one device. Now they're saying we need more because the second grader and the fifth grader need to have their own machines.
Some of that and some of it that they didn't take any initially and they're just, they're asking for them now.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Winters? Dr. Winters, that very comprehensive, excellent presentation. I think we all have a much better understanding of our virtual academy and, you know, look forward to success in the coming year, whatever form it takes. I know it, there's a lot that's up in the air right now.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger, and thank you to the whole board for your ongoing support with this. It means a lot.
Thanks, Patrick. Nice job.
Thank you.
We're going to move on into, in our agenda and we're into the public comments section, item four on the agenda. And Joe Way, can you tell us, have we received any, any comments from, from members of the public?
We have one question. It is from Janet Graden, 4489 Delmar Drive. The students definitely had a truncated school year. Teachers did an amazing job of trying to cover material. However, we all know that there is a significant amount of material that was not covered. Will the district be offering students who have aged out of the tips-type programs summer options for covering material? For example, the junior and senior high teachers have done an exceptional job making videos and other content. Would it be possible to pay those teachers to provide some content over the summer? Many of these students will have time on their hands. They may be, they may welcome having something academic. I think this is a cost investment that should not be overlooked. It's my understanding that once the students return to school, missed concepts will be addressed. If the students have had, have at least been exposed to the content over the summer, the district will most likely be more successful at covering material from this school year and fitting in all the planned content for next year. I'm concerned that students will always feel like they're behind in content. They simply cannot rush learning.
Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, would either of you like to address that question?
Sure. Thank you for the question. It is a concern that we all have. And I think it goes back to sort of what I had initially spoke about when we talked about the plan for the school opening. What is, what is it all going to look like at that point? At that point, there has been talk about spending the first semester trying to get everyone caught up. And then truncating the other three semesters, or the other, the rest of the year, the four semesters into three. One option that's been discussed. Um, we have talked at times, uh, with our legislation. About possibility of receiving some funding, uh, from the state to, uh, provide what we've called learning camps. To do exactly what, you know, Dr. Graden has asked. Um, those are all, um, ideas and programs that, that can be discussed. Again, it comes with a price tag. Uh, it also comes with, uh, a realization that. You know, how much buy-in will we actually get from the students? Um, it is their summer. Um, I know we would like them to work. On our, on our, uh, curriculum and our instructional piece. The parents would certainly like it as well. Um, on the national conference that I was in this afternoon, that seemed to be a theme that a lot of the, the superintendents talked about. That, you know, how much can we actually get these, uh, students to buy into in the summer? Look at what they've already gone through. Um, so those are, those are some of the concerns. Those are some of the fixes. And, and you know, it's something we really need to, to try and, and discuss. Uh, not only as a district, but as, as the state to, to what we're going to do.
And to kind of add to that, Dr. Phillips, um, my, my teaching and learning team, which, um, is comprised of. Um, Melissa Devlin, Andy Wallach, Joe Way, and our three coaches, Dan Wilcheck, Missy Dow, and Karen Dunzio. Um, we meet regularly. Um, I will, I will add this item to a future agenda. For us to talk about collectively, um, at a future meeting and we'll see if we have any ideas that. We could potentially, you know, look at exploring, uh, that makes sense. Uh, both from, you know, quality learning and instruction fiscally, um, and, and all the, all the angles related to that.
Also, Ed, I'm not sure how hopeful this is, um, for kids that are above the elementary grade. Um, and I can't speak for every grade level and every student, but, uh, at a line creek, my son is in second grade. And the second grade teachers have done a phenomenal job with what they're putting out there. And one of the things that they do is, you know, they have all this content, but then they have optional work. So if you have a student that wants a little bit more, they could do more. My son doesn't want to do more, but in the summer, he's going to go back and he's going to do all those optional assignments that are on there. Um, same thing with some of the specials. Don't waste time to get to all the specials. During the week, so we're going to do that stuff in the summer. So if teachers have optional stuff on there. I would encourage parents to utilize that over the summer. And, um, you know, if they don't have optional stuff on there, then I would encourage the teachers maybe to put some optional stuff on there. That whether the kids have another option in the summer.
Uh, that's a great point, um, Strad, and I, and what I would like to add too is. The, um, supplemental materials like Dreambox and iXL, that will be available all summer for our students. So they can take advantage of that stuff as well. Great point.
But I think, uh, you know, in, in, in maybe more directly responding to the question, we, we don't really have. Uh, teachers who will be paid over the summer at this point right now to be able to provide the kind of instruction that. They're receiving currently, you know, on, online. Uh, and unless we receive maybe some additional. Uh, funding from, you know, federal or state sources, it's probably unlikely that we will considering the budget dilemma that we're running into. Is that correct?
You, you're correct. Again, we're, we're still not giving up hope that we're going to get some legislative help, but, uh, you're correct.
Um, are there, uh, Mr. Way, are there any other, um, uh, comments or from, uh, questions from the public?
There were no more at this point.
Right. Um, so what, what I would suggest, Mr. Way, is, um, can we let people know how they could ask a question or make a comment? And then at the end of the meeting, uh, I'm going to check back with you again and see if anyone else has submitted any questions. Could you tell folks how to do that?
Sure. On the YouTube stream, the first, uh, comment was the web address of where to send comments. Um, if you're not following along on YouTube, um, but if you want the address, it's just webadmin, W E B A D M I N. At myexeter.org.
Thanks, Mr. Way. Okay, we're gonna move, we're gonna move into our, uh, agenda again, um, back to number five minutes. Uh, and again, I want to remind, um, particularly our board members that this is a consent agenda. Um, and if there are any, you know, obviously everything that is, or virtually everything that's on this, uh, agenda was reviewed at our workshop last. Uh, Tuesday. So if there's a need for any additional discussion, or if you'd like to pull an item from the, uh. Uh, from the, from the agenda for a separate vote. Please indicate that before, um, we begin the voting process for that particular area. So we're going to move into item, um, five minutes. And we have two sets of minutes. Uh, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the minutes for last month's board meetings.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I believe we have eight board members present.
Dave, uh, Mike Gpin is on.
Oh, Mike's, okay. Did you vote, Mike?
Uh, I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at the meetings.
Okay, so we have, uh, it, motion carries eight, uh, zero and one abstention. Uh, we're going to move on to the treasurer's report. And it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the treasurer's report for April and payment requests. Uh, for, uh, April through May.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, the motion carries nine zero. Um, the next section are, uh, district policies. Um, these are policies that were reviewed at the, um. Workshop meeting last week. We have two sets that I would like to recommend, uh, approvals for separately. The first would be, uh, the second, uh, policies that are for second reading, which means that they've had, um, a 30-day review. For comment and consideration. Um, so it's recommended the Board of School Directors approve policies numbered one through eight. On the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Then there are policies, uh, that are numbered nine through 12. These are for first reading. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve those policies for first reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could I? Yes, I, I have a question, um, Dave, on the, uh, child abuse, uh. Policy, I had raised a concern about whether. This is the place for mandated reporting requirements to be listed. And there's nothing in the. Policy as I read for first reading. And so my question stands. Um, is this where, where mandated reporting should be listed, or is there a separate policy? Uh, telling teachers and all staff, uh, all employees about their requirements under the law to. To, uh, to be mandated reporters.
We do have something in, I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say, Christine, Christine, if you wanted to, uh, respond to that.
Yeah, we do have something in the 300 section. I, I thought I did send an email about that. Um, if not, I'll definitely send that over. But I believe, um, I did respond, uh, was, it was in the 300 section, definitely.
Yeah, I just, this is a concern I've had before about some of our policies. It seems to me there should be at least a mention. Can we put a, a reference in this policy saying that? Uh, it is a, it is state law that anyone who, uh, witnesses or thinks there may be. Child abuse, you must report it. It seems to me where, where we sometimes have. Information in one policy, but not in a related policy. And I'm concerned that we. Maybe try to package them differently and cross-reference our policies. Where a legitimate question could be raised. So I just kind of throw that out, not necessarily to be resolved tonight. Uh, but for this particular policy, could we put? A reference in there to the 300 level policy about mandated reporting? Just so that somebody reading this policy, who might not be aware of the 300 policy, knows that we take. Our, our mandated reporting requirements under the law seriously.
John, when I, I think that's a good idea. Um, I'm looking at this policy and it, and, and I am seeing, you know, a section here. That is entitled reporting procedures. It's page, uh, six of the policy. And so, I, I'm not, you know, I, there, there is information. There's a phone number that folks are, are required to call. Um, and there's a timeframe that's required to, you know, to be submitted within. Uh, so I, I kind of think that the information is there. Um, but we'll take your, um, you know, your thoughts into consideration. And during this month-long time that we have before second reading, we can, um. You know, we can add that if necessary, but I would direct you to page six of that policy and.
I, I, I'm with you, Dave, except the term mandated reporting, that's the term that's in the state law. And it seems to show, again, to show the reader of a policy. Or to show a teacher or a staff member or a bus driver, or, or even a board member. Uh, that we're taking that state law seriously. Can we just put the word mandated in there somewhere and, and cross-reference it to the 300 level policy?
Uh, we'll, we'll, um, we'll take a look through that. I mean, these are, these are definitely policies that. Have, uh, for whatever reason, um, you know, they've obviously been vetted by, um, you know. Attorneys, uh, and, and, um, and carefully scripted. So let's, let's. Let's look into that though. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, um. I'm not saying that's not a good point. I think it's important for us to take and, take that in consideration during this month. So. Uh, we'll definitely look into that and then, um, get back to the board at the workshop meeting in, uh, in June.
Yeah, my other concern is that under the revisions to the law that I believe Representative Rossi. Uh, spearheaded, uh, there have been changes in the mandated reporting law. And I want to be sure that those changes are incorporated into our, into our policies.
Yeah, PSBA is pretty good at giving us, you know, through the Policy News Network, uh, the PNNs that we get. Uh, updating us in terms of any legislative changes, um, or case law. That requires change in policy. So, but we can go back through the PNNs and see if anything's been updated more recently. Relative to, uh, Representative Rossi's legislation. And in, and if our 300 section, uh, policy is outdated, well, you know, we want to make sure that's. You know, uh, current to, you know, the current, uh, legislation. So thanks for, thanks for your attention to that.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
Dr. Hamburger, uh, Dr. Hamburger, with this second set of policies, I just wanted to let folks know that. Um, with policy 918, Title I, parent and family engagement. Um, yes, you know, there are some, some kind of some missing pieces in there and some things that administration has to be filled in. Um, you know, Melissa Devlin and I have already begun work on that. We have a draft. Um, that we're already working through. When it comes up for second reading in June, those things will be complete and filled in at that time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dr. Winters. We'll look, we'll look forward to seeing that.
I had a question about the Title I policy. Was, is that like, is that all new language?
I believe that's a brand-new policy.
What was that, Dave?
I, I believe it's a brand-new policy.
Yeah, it's a brand-new policy. I found it very interesting that it said that the Title I parents at a minimum have to volunteer in their child's classroom.
Yeah, there's a lot. I mean, if you read through that carefully, there's a lot of involvement and engagement from parents in this. In, in that particular policy and, and it seems like it's a requirement. So I, I, it looks like it's putting a pretty significant burden on the school district to make sure the parents are of Title I, students are engaged.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, this has always been a focus area for, you know, the federal government with, you know, title dollars. And the family engagement piece has always been critical. Um, I, I believe we've always had to have. A family and engagement policy, but I don't believe it has before been to this level of detail that PSBA is now. You know, requiring of us.
And I'm not sure, sure how much of this is PSBA-driven. I, you know, I think it, because it's a federal policy, it may come for the federal government.
Sure. Just to, just to a point and a question, uh, it's interesting that the connection between this and Habitat for Humanity, which requires. A certain number of hours of what they call sweat equity. That the, the family for whom the house is being built must participate a certain number of hours in building that house. Uh, that's my point. The question is, how, how do we measure this? Do they have to fill out a form or a time sheet or something that says? We participated so many hours this week, month, semester. How, how do we, how do we? How do we make sure they're doing what the law requires them to do?
So, so we have to keep documents, um, internally in a dis, you know, in, in the district. That basically shows, you know, how we've, you know, followed the policy and met the parent and family engagement, you know, criteria. So. So those are things like, you know, when we have, you know, events, you know, parent events, you know, we have to. Maintain sign-in sheets, you know, we have to maintain the invitations that we send out. You know, a, all of those things are required. Because when we have our monitoring visits, when they, when, when, when they come in and monitor us for federal programs. They ask for all of that documentation. They, they ask to see all of that. And. If you don't have those things, you know, then, then you get assigned risk assessment points and that can. Cause you to have to be monitored more frequently. So, you know, there, there are many things that we have to maintain internally related to that.
Right, thanks. Uh, by the way, are there consequences for the family if they don't participate as fully as they're required to?
I don't believe so.
The consequences for the school district?
Well, I, I mean, I think, you know, the biggest consequence for the district is that, um, it, you know. Our students that qualify for Title I, you know, m- many of them have some type of, you know, significant reading deficit. And yes, you know, we offer tremendous support, you know, in school, but that. You know, parental support, you know, in addition, you know, falls outside of school as well. And a lot of the things we try to do around parental engagement are, you know, putting, you know, additional books in the hands of parents. So that, you know, kids can be reading at home and, you know. Uh, we've even used money for like Kindles and e-readers to be able to, you know, be given away as like. You know, door prizes and such at those kinds of events. And so, you know, I guess, you know, the consequence, if you want to call it one, is that. You know, if parents, you know, aren't attending the events and kind of keeping up to date with the things that we're offering. You know, it, you know, potentially impacts, you know, their kid's growth. But even in those instances. If we know students need additional support and/or we've invited families and we haven't heard a response. You know, we'll, we'll take an additional step to try to, you know, make sure that we reach out if it's a family that. You know, English is not their first language, we'll get an interpreter and, you know, do something like that to, to make sure they're aware of all, of what else is being offered.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question? Um, Dave, when you made the second motion, I heard you say nine through 12.
And I'm seeing. 13.
Okay, so. We're voting on nine through 13, not nine through 12.
Yeah, that's correct. That's, thanks for clarifying. I, I thought I. I thought I did that correctly. I must have, uh, miscounted.
So I'll second nine through 13.
Any further discussion on policies? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? With the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda to business functions. Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Um, so I'm going to separate out a few items here and then make some. Clarifying comments, uh, because I know one of, um, the board members had a question about what exactly we're voting on in the, in some of these budgets. So I just want to make that clear for everybody. Um, so it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following business functions items. One, two, uh, including letters A through H, three, seven, eight, and nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I, I still have a question. Um, I can't. Open these documents on the screen that it's in front of me. So I want to be sure, because it's been my position for several months now that this. Uh, this budget not include a tax increase. And I don't want to inadvertently. Vote for something that's going to include a tax increase. So.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for the, sorry.
Somebody explain that to me.
Yeah, so one, two, three, seven, eight, and nine don't include any of the budgets. But I'll get to your question in a minute because that deals exactly with number six here, which I think your question is probably the same question that the, that the other board member I'm referring to had. So I will get to that. I think we're just looking at those other items first, though.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Aaron's.
Yeah, so as a, as a clarification point to the question, John, that I think you were asking, and if I don't answer it, please let me know. Number six, the proposed final budget. So what we're voting on here is to advertise a proposed final budget that would finally be voted on in June. I think we're all clear with that. The, the number six item includes in the budget a proposed tax increase, I believe, of 1.5%. That is not how, that budget form that we are voting on this evening and that we'll vote on in June is not actually how taxes will be levied. They'll be by a separate resolution. But for the state's purpose of accounting, they need to have a revenue number that reflects a tax increase that the board is going to consider. So two answers to your, maybe three answers to your question. So the first answer to that question would be is there is a tax increase in that number six budget. The second answer would be that that tax increase is not actually what would levy that tax. And the third point to your question is, if your, if your point is to not support a tax increase, I think it's really a judgment call on your own part whether or not you vote for or against this proposed final budget because ultimately it's putting forward a tax increase for the agenda in June. But on the other hand, that's not actually the, the venue where taxes would be levied, whether that would be no tax increase or 1.5% increase. So I hope that answered your question. But if not, I can, I can try saying that a different way because I know I threw a lot out there.
No, I just wish I could open the document, but I'm clicking on it, but I can't open it. I'll, I think I know how I'm going to vote.
But Hunter, Hunter, just getting back to item six, you know, that general fund budget basically is a resolution that indicates how much we're planning on spending for the 2020, 21 school year, correct? I mean.
In, in effect, yes. I mean, when you use resolution, to me, I wouldn't use that word. But yes, it is this, that is the spending plan. That is not the, the venue through which we raise revenue.
Right. I mean, that's, that, that's sort of a reflection of everything that we have clustered up, you know, in terms of what we need to be able to pay for, for next, for next year. So that represents the expenses that we will, that we anticipate that we'll have. But I think you're correct. It doesn't necessarily say how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't, within that resolution, there's no mention of a, a property tax increase, correct?
Yeah. So, so if that, if that number six were to be passed unanimously this evening or passed unanimously at the June meeting, that in and of itself would not raise a tax. That has to be done separately by a separate resolution.
Correct. Yeah, this just, I think, and that's what I'm trying to, I mean, I want to make that clear to, you know, the board members who have questions about it. It, it, it doesn't have any implications for what we're deciding in terms of tax increase or no tax increase or the amount. It simply says this is how much we're planning on spending next year.
Okay.
Okay.
So what, what I would like to do now is I'd like to take four and five, which are the proposed final budget for the Food Service Department and then for capital projects funds. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following business functions items, number four and number five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries nine zero.
Okay. So I just have a quick statement that I want to read in preparation for number six as the Business Functions Chair, and then I'll move to vote on that as well. This budget is the culmination of extensive work by the district, especially amongst its administrators. We have worked to remain transparent, including recording meetings, posting them on YouTube, having at least a dozen presentations in the past eight months, holding town halls, responding to emails, phone calls in a variety of social media venues, as well as the personal interactions with our neighbors, families, and friends. This process has not been perfect, but I believe the entire proposal of reductions represents a well-considered and measured proposal that has made long-term cuts and slowed the growth of our expenditures to a point where we will begin to process, we will be able to be, we will begin a process of creating sustainability in our finances. I encourage my colleagues to support this budget. And with that, I move that the proposed final budget for 2021, 20, 2020, 21 school year be considered and approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, we have a roll call, call and vote. Mrs. Gaitish.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yeah.
Mr. Tepina?
Yes.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Aaron's?
Yes.
Dr. Herring?
No.
Mr. Fidler?
No.
Five to four. George, it passes.
So I also realize that I failed to do this the way that we talked about last week, and for that I apologize. And there's still ways and Roberts rules to go about doing this if, if it is so desired. We had discussed how to vote on amendments to the proposed final budget that would be included and added price requests for board members. So if there's anybody who wishes to do that, what you would do at this time is that you would move to reconsider the budget with an amendment, and then you would state that amendment. So just exactly how I said it, I, Hunter, and this is an example, I'm not actually doing this. I, Hunter, move that the, I don't know, the, the, that expenses for the football program are not funded for 2020, 2021 and reconsidered in the budget. So you would, you would basically say something to that effect. So I apologize for, for not catching that when I went through this the first time.
Would anyone like to propose an amendment?
I think this pertains to me. I just don't know how to put it off to that nice fancy wording that you have there, Hunter. But I want to amend one hour decrease to the reading aids.
If I can just jump in there for a parliamentary procedure issue. You, you want to move to reconsider the budget with an amendment. So you, you just want to say reconsider the budget with the amendment and then state your amendment.
Okay. I, Michelle Stratton, move to reconsider the budgetment with the amendment, removing the hour from the reading aids. And I think Ann had told us previously, but I don't know that it was stated in a meeting like this. But I believe the amount was, it's like $20,000 a year. Is that correct still, Ann?
The amount is $23,513, $23,513. So that would increase the expenditure amount up to 78, 78 million, 997,263 dollars.
While increasing the support that we were planning to cut from children.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend. Do we, do we have a second?
Come on, people.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I mean, I feel like I've already stated this. I'll just state it again in hopes that, you know, someone feels the way that I feel. You were talking about kids, we're talking about the neediest of kids in our district that need this reading support, that have had this reading support, that we're taking away time from these kids in a time when they are already falling behind because of things that they can't control. We have kids at home that probably don't have books. We have kids at home that aren't getting online or can't get online and are not able to access the wonderful materials that we do have, like RAS Kids and Epic, which are great things. But, you know, these kids need that support. And as wonderful as our teachers are, you know, I think just listening to Dr. Haller last week, she stated that, you know, they need reading aids for their kids. And Watten Creek is going to be the school that's affected the most. And I don't think that that's fair, that one school over the others is going to get less support for their students. I wouldn't wish that on any school. I wouldn't wish that on any kids. And I would hate to see the implications of this without having a plan. If we had a plan in place and it was a great plan, I would be all for this. But as of now, I don't see a plan on how we're going to cover taking this away from these children. So I don't think that it's in the best interest of the kids to take this away from them right now.
I have a question. Are we revoting on the whole budget? Or are we just now voting on the budget with adding the reading aids back? Or now are we just voting on the reading aids themselves?
So what Michelle would have motioned for and what I was saying, and, you know, if, if I made this more complicated, I apologize. But basically, under Roberts rules, what you're doing is you're reconsidering what was just approved. Because that's just the easiest way that I know how to do it. And, and this is, this is because I failed to, to ask for amendments at the time when we were considering the initial budget. But you're basically reopening the budget that's just been adopted by the board and then amending that budget to include an additional piece, which is what Michelle is doing.
I don't know, I don't understand what a vote for the motion.
The vote for the motion would essentially add $23,000 to the proposed budget. And that $23,000 would be to, to reinstitute that one hour for the reading aids at Watten Creek and Reiften Schools.
I'm going to say now that this really doesn't have to do with the reading aids themselves. But I'm concerned that our point of thinking doesn't meet the needs of our students right now and what we want to accomplish as a district. And I agree with Michelle that we don't have a plan in place. I was this close to not voting for this closed budget because of that reason. So because this was brought up as a reason to amend it, I will not be voting for the proposed budget. I just, I just have so many concerns about if we are using our staff members correctly, if we have staff members doing things that they, jobs that they shouldn't be doing, that are not in their job responsibilities, if we have staff members that are working at their performance, if, if we're satisfied with how our students are performing. All of those questions come back to benefits and salaries, and that is the biggest chunk of our budget. And I'm not sure that we have those things in line. I heard tonight at the business functions, and I agree with Ann, this is not an Ann's issue at all. This is again, kind of, this should not be coming out of the budget, out of the business functions. This is something that should be coming out of curriculum to make sure that our staffing is in place to meet the needs of our students. That's what needs to come first.
So to be clear, are you in favor of the amend, or the amended proposal or against that? Just, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
I'm against it because I don't think that our, our staffing is lined up right now with what we need to accomplish.
Okay, so can I, can I just jump in here? I think that there's some confusion. And again, I apologize because this is primarily due to me not reading my own notes here properly. So by not voting for this, and if this motion were to fail, we still have already a proposed final budget that was just approved by the board in that five to four vote. So Allison, I think what you're, what you're getting at is that you're concerned about the overall budget. That budget has already been approved on the vote that we just had prior to this. So what, what we're ultimately doing here is reconsidering a different budget with Michelle's amendment. So if you, if you wanted to reconsider the budget as a whole, I can, you know, I could give you the parliamentary procedure about how to do that. But that's, that's not what's on the table right now. And that would have to be done after Michelle's motion is considered.
All right.
So can I just ask a question? I mean, I'm wondering, I mean, again, I know that we're interpreting parliamentary procedure, but we are sort of biased parties in our interpretation. I'm wondering if we can't get Ellis on the phone and just clear with him that the process that we're going through is appropriate so that we're not taking an action in some way that can be nullified because we operated improperly.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know whether we can do that or not, Mike.
Because I, I don't, I mean, you know, again, I, I want to take Hunter at his word, but I think we all, as nine board members, have a vested interest in what we're voting on here. We probably should have a third party advising us on the proper process here. Because if I understood what Allison was saying, she is expressing concerns about the totality of the budget in terms of properly funding the district in a way that it needs to, to fulfill the needs to the kids. And what I've, and I've taken this two different ways now. From what I understood Hunter to say, one was we were, he's, you've now said we've approved the budget. So there's already a budget approved regardless of what this next vote is. The next vote could possibly just remove that $23,000 or keep that $23,000 in. The fact of the matter is, is that whatever was voted on is done. But I believe a little earlier, and maybe I misinterpreted, but I thought I interpreted you as saying a revote was a revote on the entire budget. So what I'm, what I'm saying is I'm confused. And I don't know if we have a parliamentarian that can take us properly through the process. I mean, this is a formal vote that then gets forwarded on to the state.
Well, hey, Mike, can I just, can I just say that if, if the, if the motion that was, you know, made by Michelle fails, then I don't think we have a, an issue. If it, if it's successful, then I think we'd have some questions because we've already established, you know, you know, a majority vote for the general fund budget. So I mean, we could, we could move forward and resolve, you know, the current question. And, and if, and if it results in a, you know, support for the amendment, then I think we, we may need to confer. I would agree.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Sure.
Okay.
And I guess.
I agree with what Mike just said. I, that's why I asked the question first. Are we voting on it, revoting with a new amendment added? And that's why I thought we were, and that's why.
We're voting on the, we're voting on the amendment. And if the amendment fails, then the existing proposal and that, that, that was just passed previously would, would remain intact. So there wouldn't be any change. In other words, the former, the former motion that was. In other words, the former, the former motion that was passed eight, eight, or what was it, five to four, would, would remain in place.
This is, and it was actually six to three. I thought I heard someone say no, but they said yes.
Okay, six to three. All right.
Yeah. And I, again, guys, I apologize. I pulled up my, this is the one that PSBA provided us, our rules on parliamentary procedure. And, you know, I have no problem getting Ellis on the phone. And to Mike's point, you know, if, if we do want to reopen this to a larger extent, it might, it might be a good idea just to get that confirmation. But from what I'm reading here, that this is basically the correct way to do this. We're reconsidering something that has already been passed with that amendment in, in it.
And so, yeah, Hunter, just to clarify, if, if it, if it passes, if the amendment passes, the general fund budget is, is modified to include the additional $23,000. If it fails, then we, then the, the final general fund budget remains as it was previously passed. Correct?
So if the first, this is, this is where it gets complicated. So if, if this were to, if, if we reconsider and we vote to reconsider and the budget is then opened up, then that becomes the budget vote. And the previous vote is not held. Does, does that make sense? So this completely replaces the previous vote that we would have just taken. So if this were, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So yeah, I see what you're saying. Because if this had been done in a different sequence, if we had entertained that amendment prior to that, to that last vote, it would have been somewhat different that. But I hear what you're saying now.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, I'm sorry for making this a mess.
No, it wasn't you, Michelle. It was not you.
Well, I didn't help. But I just urge, you know, despite the confusion that's behind this, you know, I urge the board members when you're voting, forget about the mess and just think of for me, you know, think about the kids that need that support when you're placing that vote. You know, I know it's a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, the consequences of how much we might need to spend to help these kids may be greater than that amount. They need this support. I mean, I don't know if we have a number on how many kids currently are into your time, but it's a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids that need this. And we don't know what we're gonna do with them now that they don't have it.
I have a comment. We, we asked the administration to come up with cuts that they thought would not have a big impact on, on students. And I'm hearing that there's no, no plan to cover one hour of lost time with, with aids. But is that, wouldn't that have been something, some discussion among the principals or, you know, the administrators about how they would still be able to meet needs of students with, you know, one hour less of, of time from aids? Wasn't that, I'm thinking, wasn't that a discussion that they had before they recommended this as a cut? Because I, I'd like to see no cuts. I think not, I think we all would like to see no cuts whatsoever, no tax increases. But we know that even with that proposed one and a half percent, we still have a $3 million shortage, a budget deficit, and that might even be bigger depending on what we have to, you know, if there's increased costs when school opens up or decreased revenue. So, you know, I hear what you said, you know, what's being said about this. And, 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 you know, we don't want to take anything away, but I, I'm failing to see how we're gonna balance the budget, you know, with the kind of deficit that we have. And, and I, I trust that the administration looked carefully at all these cuts that they were asked to, to, to find and, you know, thought about how that's going to impact, you know, their, their children in the buildings.
I think, go ahead.
Well, I mean, that, that's, you know, like, that's where I'm struggling with that because I don't want to see children harmed or, you know, have things taken away that they need, put into their academics. But at the same time, this is what we asked administration to do. And I feel that they looked at that carefully. They didn't just say, well, let's just cut this, let's just cut that. Am I right? Uh, uh, Dr. Winters and Dr. Phillips, I mean, how, were these things looked at carefully? In terms of, oh, you know, when, you know, like, didn't principals think about, okay, if we cut one hour, that this is a plan that they can, how they can manage the other hours that the, the aides are there?
That discussion, hello, that discussion did take place. We had talked about the cuts being a little bit deeper at the aid level. The principals came back and said we could handle a one-hour cut in reduction and that they would reassess and prioritize the staff to meet the needs.
So Bob, could you explain to the board then in what way the principals will be making up the hours since you're representing them?
I'm not representing them, Mr. Japina. I'm telling you.
No, but, but I know, but, but if they told you, one would assume that you would have asked them to explain how they were gonna make up that lost hour. So I'm just asking you to explain to the board, you know, how that's gonna be made up. I think that's what Sharon's asking.
Sure.
Is how's that gonna be made up?
Well.
I'm not asking, no, I'm, I'm not asking how it's gonna be made up. What I'm saying is, it's my belief that when you, when they came up with this was something that could be cut, that there was discussion among the principals about, you know, that they could do this, that they could manage it, that they felt that they could, or, or they wouldn't have recommended that.
Well, we've heard from Dr. Howler last week say that, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but from what I, from what she said, this is not a good idea and it's not good for children. And we say one hour, but that, I can't speak for the numbers at Reifton, I apologize, but I know at Watten, it's 15 hours total. There's three reading aids, one hour a day. That's 15 hours. It's 15 hours that those kids are losing out. It's not just one hour. It's one hour a day per three aides. And, and if Sharon does want to ask a question, then I do want to ask the question. What is the plan?
Once again, I said in the meeting, we had talked about it. The principals said that they didn't want to cut the aids drastically, that they would be able to look at the one-hour reduction and they would prioritize the schedules of the aides to meet the needs of the students. At that point, we didn't get a specific plan and we did give them the ability to design their plan themselves without giving any kind of mandate from the administration at the central office.
Folks, can I go back to the, you know, parliamentary procedures and just let you know that I do have Ellis Katz on the line? And I have him via speakerphone. And so any questions that we have relative to parliamentary procedure regarding this vote, we can direct to him at this time. I've given him a little bit of an explanation, but Hunter, maybe you can kind of describe your understanding of where we are right now.
Yeah. Um, Ellis, can you hear me okay? Okay. So basically what happened, we took a vote on the proposed final budget for the general fund only. So we're only talking about that one general fund proposed final budget. It was passed. And what we were basically trying to have members of the board, give them an opportunity to amend the budget with amendments that they desire. We did not do that. And what we're trying to do now is to, as I understand it, reconsider that previous motion with those desired amendments. So there's a motion on the table. There is a second to reconsider that budget with the amendment that one of the board members is, is looking for. I, I think more than one, but just in this case, yes. And I think that there's also a desire to reconsider.
To reconsider. Was it somebody who was on the winning side of the original motion or not? Because that's the key.
No.
Under Roberts' rules for reconsideration during the same board meeting that a motion's already been, been approved.
No, it was not. So then that would be out of order. So then the way to go about doing this properly would be for somebody who was on the winning side of the motion to move to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay. So then with that, with that being said, in, in the spirit of collegiality, because I really, I, I don't support the amendment that Michelle is trying to make, but I will make a motion that we reconsider the previous motion. I'm doing this without amendments. So this opens up the budget basically again. So if, if you're supporting opening up the budget, then you would vote in favor of this. And at that point, we can take amendments to the open budget. Is, is that correct, Ellis?
So, so you just made a motion to reconsider. You were in the majority on the original motion?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So yeah, so you've made a motion to reconsider and you're the right, you, as someone who was in the majority on the original motion, you have the ability to do what you just done.
Okay, so I, I'm, at this point right now, I think we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Actually, Dave, I, I would like to second that, but I'd like to amend that motion to put that in place for one year till the new superintendent can assess.
Wait, oh, um, if, Mike, if I, if I can just make a point here. I think what I'm trying to do is just open the budget completely so that we can go back and do these amendments. Because I think there are going to be multiple amendments here. So if, if you would support my motion without any amendments to it, it would completely reopen the budget. So then we could do the amendments in just a basic amendment format, rather than try and do all this mess and craziness.
Okay, so, so as long as Ellis. I'm sorry, go ahead. That was Ellis. Go ahead.
He said that's the way to do it?
What I said is, the way that Hunter just described it, if you want to bring back the original budget that was adopted or approved, the way you just described it would be the way, the way to do it. The motion to reconsideration, you need a second. You have some debate if you're gonna have debate. If the, if the motion to reconsider ultimately is approved, then the, the original budget is back on the table for consideration.
Okay, so then I will second Hunter's motion without an amendment at this point.
Right.
And then I ask for unanimous consent to suspend debate on this motion and to consider the motion. And this is just to reconsider. This is only to reconsider and open up the budget. It wouldn't be any prohibiting amendments to that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'm not even sure what's going on. I'm gonna be honest.
Okay, so, so the, so the budget is, is open for, and we can, we can now, I think, start to proceed with proposals for amendments. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I can make my.
Somebody would just, so somebody would just make an amendment and then we're voting on the amendment. Now, just to be clear, if an amendment passes, you still have to vote on the final product after all the amendments have been considered.
Okay, so then.
I'm really glad you're here, Ellis. Sorry.
Me too. So then I am proposing to make an amendment to reinstate the aides one hour at a Watten and Reifton.
Is there a second?
Am I saying that correctly?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I'm still, I'm with at least two other board members who are confused. And it's, it's good to know that it's not just my age that's causing the confusion. I, what, what we're doing now, so we, we, let's say I want, let's say I support, it's just a, a, a what if? Let's say I support one of these amendments. I support, let's say I support Michelle's amendment. I vote yes to support the amendment. Then are we going to have a vote on the whole budget?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm less confused. Thank you.
Yep. We're amending the final product that we then vote on.
Okay. Now I'm, I just, I just grabbed hold of the caboose.
Okay. Any, any additional discussion or questions?
Dr. Hamburger, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So when Michelle was speaking previously, she was talking about the reading aids in particular. Her, her last motion said instructional aids.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just wanted to get clarification on which she was direct, so that we knew exactly what, yeah.
The reading aids.
I'd like to give it to all of them, but.
The reading aids at a Watten and, and, and Reifton, correct, Michelle?
Yes. Yeah, because I believe that at Jackson Wall and Laurie, they are funded through Title I funding, so they're not being cut.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah. Like I said, I'd like to keep all of them, but I, I, you know, I understand where we're at. And I understand that some cuts need to be, but I don't feel like this is the place at the expense of the children that need this support.
Any further discussion?
I'm gonna throw out there, again, I, I've said this before, but I believe that the best staff to work with our most needy students is certified teachers. So that's why I will be voting no for this.
And I don't disagree with Allison at all on that. However, they are trained in the program that is used. And if for next year, we have a better solution and a plan in place, hopefully we'll be all for that. But right now, this is what we got for our kids.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. Yep.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton?
Aye.
Mr. Japina?
Yes.
Dr. McLendon?
No.
Dr. Hamburger?
No.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Arons?
No.
Dr. Herring?
No.
Mr. Fidler?
Aye.
Five no, four yes.
Okay, so the motion fails. Are there any other proposed amendments? So if there are none, I suppose it would be then time to vote on the the, the, the budget, the budget question?
That's number six.
Number six?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion, Hunter?
Well, just call the question because we're, we're already working on that motion as it is because we reconsidered the motion. So call the question.
We have a motion and a second on this already.
That's my understanding. Is Ellis still there that he wants to chime in with that?
Yeah, yeah, your, the original budget motion is now put back on the table. So if you've already had a motion and a second, then you could have further discussion if you wish, or just, just vote on.
Who made, who made the motion? Who made the second?
Well, I made the motion and then I think Mike would have made the original second.
So we're back to the original motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
What, what, I, I, what is the motion again? For number six?
Yes.
As it is?
As it is. As it is.
Okay, I'm yes then.
Any other questions? Before we, we vote here?
Did I just move that we have a
roll call?
A roll call vote now, now?
Yeah?
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton?
No.
Mr. Japina? Mr. Japina? Mr. Japina?
No.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Arons?
Yes.
Dr. Herring?
No.
Mr. Fidler?
No.
We have five nos.
So.
My amendment again, and then you'll have five yeses.
This is about to get super interesting, but we, we don't have a proposed final budget now. Um, so we would need to, um, so Ellis, would the best way to do it now is to make a motion with an amendment in the initial motion? Because I don't know if we could reconsider something that's been reconsidered.
Well, the only way you could reconsider the budget that just failed would be if somebody who voted against it decides, you know, moves for it to be reconsidered. So if, if that doesn't happen, you're right. Then what you're left with is coming up with a different budget that's different in some way. That could be, um, a, a new motion to have a budget with X first instead of Y and see if there's a second, a second, and that's support for a vote on it, on a different budget. In some way different than the budget that just got defeated.
I will change my no to yes if somebody votes yes for the instructional aids. I'm sorry, not instructional aids, reading aids.
For those who voted no, is there, is there some element to this budget that you would like to see changed that would make it palatable?
Um.
So what, might we suggest that we, we take a vote, uh, to, to, um, uh, to reconsider if some, or someone would have to do that who, uh, voted against it? Or voted for it, I suppose.
Probably the easiest way, I would think, because.
Would only be to reinstate the budget that just got defeated. If, if somebody has a different version of the budget that they want the board to consider, then they can make a motion for a budget that does whatever they want it to do. Uh, and then see if there's a second and then have that, that different budget upwards for vote. The reconsideration, if somebody who voted, who just defeated the budget, wanted to reinstate that budget for consideration with no changes, that would be the way the reconsideration would vote. If somebody wants to propose a new, a different budget, with something different in it, then that would be a motion.
Well, Michelle, I think you were the one, weren't you? Weren't you saying you're, you're proposing a different budget? That would include the, uh, twenty-three thousand and some odd dollars to the, to the, uh, the budget that's item six. And that would be, that would be a change to what we just voted on.
Yeah. So she, if she wants to make that motion, there's a motion and we need a second.
Well, I made the motion and it didn't go through. And I could.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I run against because it didn't, yeah, there, there was no.
Is that the same, is that the same person that had already been defeated?
On amendment, not on motion.
Just a little different.
Well, if it's a little different, then it, then it would be, I give it to a different motion. And not a reconsideration, but a different motion. If it's different.
So what, what would, what we would do is you would say, I motion to consider item number six under the business functions agenda with, and then state what you want to add in or take away.
Correct.
And then that's what would get seconded and be voted on.
Right, right.
Correct, correct.
If someone.
So.
Wanted to make that.
Is, is there any, is there any other place in the budget where we could find a cost offsetting for this additional hour that we, we know about right now? And I know that makes it so complicated, but you know, I think for me, the important pieces here making cuts that are long-term. Because the structural deficit that we have, it's very easy for us to start picking apart small items and saying, these are drops in the bucket. And these won't matter in the grand scheme of things. But ultimately, the entire list of reductions, you could make the argument that they are all drops in the bucket. So we can't approve or disapprove, in my opinion, a budget based on these drops in the buckets. Because this bucket, I, I don't want to keep using this analogy. Every single dollar that we vote on at this point is extremely important. And we need to have the consideration for each one of those dollars that we
Hunter, you just.
As eliminate our structural deficit. I, I paused that one. I don't know if I. So, and I, I hate to try and come up with this now, but if, if there's a way to find cost savings to offset this amount, I'm willing to go along with it because I think that would get us to a majority right now. Cause we need to pass this by the end of May. But for me, for me to change my vote, those cuts need to be long lasting and they need to be equivalent or more than this amount.
And Hunter, I hear where you're coming from. Um, but I think there's sort of a philosophical difference here. Um, Michelle's putting a face on that dollar and she feels passionately about it. And, um, I think that's sort of the impasse that we're at right now.
I, I think, I think that's fair. Um, you know, I think the face though, for what I'm talking about for a non-financially sustainable picture is that our inability to respond to our future needs for students is going to be hampered. You know, I've said it as an example several times because it's an issue that I, that I keep quiet about, that I feel very passionately about, that we really need to look at having a social worker in this district or multiple social workers in this district to address our mental health needs. And I don't think that there's, and I, I'm, I'm getting passionate and I'm not upset at all. I'm just getting passionate about this. Because having a sustainable budget for the long term is what's going to be able to make sure that we can respond to the needs of kids. And this, you know, we, we can say up and down, and I'm getting text messages while I'm sitting here, that this is an important piece of our budget, but we can say that about every single piece of this budget. We don't have easy cuts anymore, in my opinion. I don't know where you find easy cuts in this budget, and I don't know where you find any cuts that aren't going to impact people. And we really need to start making some really challenging decisions. And I'm not discounting that this is not an easy one of them. I'm not saying that at all, but we really have to find a way to tackle this. And I, I just. Yeah.
Well, Hunter, if I can say, I know I'm frustrated because, um, I know some of us on the board had brought up some cuts that we felt would not potentially affect the kids. And we were shot down tremendously. And it took you months to get to this point in what you produced for the budget. So to ask us right now to just pull out ideas, it's, it's not realistic at all. Does that, I mean, that's where I'm at.
Yeah. Can you share with that? I'm not aware of that. Can you share what those budgets, I mean, what the cuts that you came up with that would impact?
It was done in executive session. I don't feel comfortable putting it out there like this.
Can I ask Ellis? Is Ellis still there?
I'm here.
Okay. The, the problem we're having is Michelle can't do the same motion that she put through, correct?
Uh, that motion was defeated.
Okay, but her motion. Her motion was to put back in the instruct, the reading aides. What if she put, what if her motion was to add twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to the budget? That's not the same motion, is it?
Well, uh, it, it, well, except eventually someone's going to have to decide where that money goes.
Well, that's going to go to the reading aides. But it's not the same, just trying to get us to that point.
Well, well, I, I think Michelle could make that motion because what it failed as was an amendment. So she couldn't have made the same amendment on that previous, and, and this is confusing. I appreciate it. But she can make that motion because she didn't make that motion before, because what she was doing was amending a motion.
So I would be making an emotion for the amount of money or for the reading aids?
You can say for the reading aides or you can say for the amount of money. Either one is fine. You just want to identify that it is going towards that additional hour for the reading aides.
Okay. Then I would happily like to make a motion to the budget, item number six. Include the reading aides at their full time for the twenty-three thousand, five hundred hours. Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Now, now I'm, uh, I've just lost my ten, tentative grasp on the back of the caboose and I'm lost again.
Asking my same question again, but in a different way. I would like the reading aides for the children at a Watten Creek and at Reifton.
Right. I understand that. What I'm having trouble distinguishing is what we're voting on now and what we.
So if, if we wouldn't make any amendments and we would just go to a vote, we're voting on the full budget with the reading aides. And, and that, that would be the whole vote.
You were back to item six.
Oh, okay. Okay. We're back to item six plus the reading aides.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that, this is amendable. Um, so people could, could raise amendments to this.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, real quickly, you, you said about, um, earlier, my, Mr. Japina said about a face. Right here is a face. This is a kid that gets that support. And during this meeting, I've had friends send me messages that their kids get the support. Okay? Don't let my Keegan down.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I just want to jump in quick. You know, I, Michelle, I appreciate where you're coming from. And I think that we can all resonate with that and empathize with that. And, and just the same, if, if there were support that Tucker was getting, if there were support that my sister Marion was getting, if there was support that I was getting, we could make the same discussion. And that's going to apply for every single cut. We have kids all over the district who use various needs that we're going to have to consider reducing services for because there is not enough money to do everything we're doing now. That's the bottom line. And I don't understand where we can get to this point without making decisions like this. And I don't think that this decision is any more unique than any of the other ones that we're going to make. And I'm also concerned that, you know, if we are not able to make these decisions now, what does that bode well for how we're going to have to look at professional staff next year? So I, I can't, I can't support this motion without funds that offset this because we have done this work. We have come to this point. And I, I, and I appreciate your, your comment. Um, I'm not remembering the specific one that you're talking about. I trust that it was made. But we also know that we have significant restrictions in what we are able to do, both by state law, by state regulations, uh, related to, um, furloughing staff. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying, and I think I've seen the administrators try harder than I've ever seen before. And I've been watching these meetings since I was fifteen years old. And I, I've really seen more effort than I've ever seen before in trying to make sure that this is getting sustainable and, and maybe, maybe the administrators feel a little bit different, I do about that. But this was well measured, well considered all the way through. This was something that was talked about extensively. And this was something that was even compromised with our building administrator. And our building admin, and it's true that she has concerns about some of these cuts. Um, and that's probably true for some of our other principles as well. But this was something that we brought through all the way. And this was something that there was plenty of compromise on. And this was something that we're going to continue to work through next year and the year after that.
So Hunter, I hear what you, you're saying. It's kind of what I was saying too. Cuts are pain, they're painful to make cuts. And it's painful to raise taxes. You know, I don't think any of us want to do that. But if somebody can tell me where these millions are coming from, that we have a deficit. You know, where, you know, where is that going to come from? Because we're, it, even with a one and a half percent, is this correct? We still have, if we, with all the cuts, if they stay in place and a one and a half percent increase, we still have about a three million dollar deficit. Is that right? So somebody can tell me where that money is coming from. Where's the money going to come from?
I've said it before, and my biggest concern is that you're saving this money now, but in the long run, it's going to cost you a lot more money to catch these kids up. That's where I'm concerned. And I hope somebody takes a vote so we can move on.
So if I understand, Michelle, what you're saying is that, you know, if you don't catch these kids now, they end up falling into our, you know, under, uh, some sort of a, into special education or called, could cost considerably more to address those issues if we didn't catch them where we're catching them. Um, at a young age, I think the other thing, and I know Hunter's talked about this quite a bit around, uh, structural deficit. I mean, structural deficit is basically you're starting in a hole with a ladder. And while you keep adding rungs to the ladder to get out of the hole, the state keeps digging a deeper hole. And you never come out of that hole. So to your point, Sharon, where, where are the, where are the million dollars of coming from? Well, it would start if the state could ease some of the regulations that we, some of these unfunded mandates that you hear Hunter talk about. And, and I also think we do need property tax reform, but that's not coming either. And so what we're doing is, I mean, we're going to, we're going to take this budget and we're going to put it on the backs of people who aren't the problem. You know, you, you can listen, everybody in the world tell you all they want. Teachers aren't the problem. Aides aren't the problem. These individuals aren't the problem. The system is the problem.
Agree with, I do agree with that, Mike. We know, and, and, uh, Dave, you presented a number of times about the reduction in the state, you know, funding and the increase in underfunded and unfunded mandates. And that, that does need to change, but Mike, what do we do in the meantime? And we, you know, I was part of the DA works where you're trying to get, you know, writing and your, to your legislators and like, what, what do we do in the meantime? What do we do right now?
Right. That's a rhetorical question. And I don't think there's a simple answer to it. And I think that's what we're all wrestling with. I mean, there, you know, there's a, there's another, I mean, you know, there's, there's another option. I mean, we can, you can take the 1.5% tax increase, make a 1.75, pick up the twenty-three thousand dollars and offset that cost.
Mrs. Gaddish, what, what would the impact be on the, uh, tax increase if we were to take Mike's suggestion?
To include the twenty-three thousand by thirteen, the increase would be 1.55%.
1.55 instead of 1.5. Okay.
So does anybody have a creative solution here, um, to get this passed this evening? Cause I've got one, but I'd prefer not to mention it.
No, I just, I just like to say that I'm, I'm more receptive to Michelle's argument. If we, if we have a way to pay for it, that's not dipping into. If we, if we have a way to pay for it, that's not dipping into further into our fund balance. Um, so I would be, I would be amenable, you know, with the condition that the um, the increase is is added on to the tax, um, the tax levy.
So I I agree with that, if we do it that way.
And considering it's a, it's from one point five to one point five five, it, to me, that's a little more palatable.
And and I know you don't have that number off the top of your head, but you know, you presented last week, you had that chart where it was gonna be, uh, I think it was five ninety nine on a house that was a hundred nine thousand, which was average, uh, um, value of assessment for houses in Exeter. So that seems like that would really only increase it a very little bit more.
Right, one point five percent, um, fifty three seventy nine per year on an average household. So it would be very minimal.
Can I suggest we call the question? Does anybody have any questions about the motion before we we vote on this?
Yeah, well, so could you just, what is the motion then? We're voting, can you just say what it is, so we're clear?
Yeah, I mean, my my understanding of the of the motion is that we're, um, we're uh, voting to approve item six as it is stated in the agenda with the addition of the twenty three thousand um, dollars associated with the reinstatement of the title or of the reading aids at a Watten and 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 Reifton.
So it's all I think, Dave, you said like you'd be in favor of that if we do a one point five five tax increase, but we don't know if that's gonna happen. So we're voting to, we would be voting now to say, uh, increase the budget.
All we're doing is
We don't know if we're gonna have the, where the money's gonna come from to
Right. What we're doing is right now, we're just voting to to increase the, um, the anticipated spending for next year by twenty three thousand dollars.
Well, well, aren't we, didn't we say we want to know if we add twenty three thousand five hundred to the budget? We want to know where that's gonna be put back in. So how do we, how do we vote on that? We don't know it, how it's gonna be put back in.
That's not included in the
This is the proposed final budget. Does do, do you understand that there will be some changes that happen between now and June twenty third? That, uh, from what I understand, the Health Trust is taking their final vote, maybe sometime this week on the premium increase. Uh, Joe Way is getting his final numbers on Chromebooks and, uh, I'm getting proposals on financing. So there will be, um, changes. Not drastic. We also don't know what's gonna happen with the state budget, so. We have a workable budget here, uh, that needs to go on display.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Was opposed?
No.
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 Roll call, Ann.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton? Mrs. Stratton?
I said aye, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Mr. Japina?
Aye.
Dr. McLendon?
No.
Dr. Hamburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Aaron's?
Aye.
Dr. Herring?
No.
Mr. Fidler?
No.
Four nos, five yeses.
So motion passes. Uh, Ellis, thanks for your, uh, your, your assistance in the process. I I think we can probably let you go now.
Okay, if you need me, I can be reached.
Okay, thanks again.
All right.
Thanks, Ellis.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, you're any issues for, um, business functions, Mr. Aaron's?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna move to the personnel committee, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, one, two, three, four, and five.
Second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Japina. Any discussion?
Can I just say quick that I've only had a few limited reactions with, um, Karen, uh, Greb, um, the Business Manager Secretary, and I've always just been very impressed by her. And it's always a pleasure to call Ann's office, which happens more often than, um, and probably which but it's always very good to talk to Karen, and I really appreciate her, uh, courteousness when I've spoken with her. And I just, uh, wanna congratulate her and and thank her for the work that she's done in service to the district and, um, good luck in retirement.
And I wanted to reach out to both of them, Barbara and Karen, to ask them about their plans, but I haven't gotten a chance to do that. So I'll try to remember that for next month.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think that's all for personnel. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Uh, student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following business function items. Oh goodness, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. The following student function. And
Oh, by the way, did we vote on that last one? Or do we have to vote? Sorry. I thought I had a second, but I didn't hear a vote.
Vote on personnel either.
Yeah, we didn't vote on personnel.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote on personnel?
Nope.
No, we just had a second, was it?
Okay. All right, any, let's go back to personnel.
Yes.
Man. Um. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for picking up on that.
I'm sorry, I just, I just caught it. I was like, wait a minute, wait.
We've gone a little bit cattywampus tonight.
So we're, we're back into student functions, Mrs. Stratton. We're just about to articulate the items in in that.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following student function items, one through six.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions. Um, for item number six, it says that, um, we have four slots there. My question is, um, did we have four slots there in the past? Um, so is this an increase from what we have before? Is it the same number? And then with that one, um, all of these outside placements, my question is, um, with school being not inchen, um, I would assume that those schools are providing service to our kids still, um, so what happens with this? If, say, we don't go back in the fall, are we still paying this entire amount? Or for the kids that aren't really, are the kids, if they're not getting services, are we getting money back here? You know, is there anything happening with that? With everything that's going on?
Yeah, if second question first, yes, they are providing the instruction just like any other institution. Um, the first question was, uh, these are students that were moving from a placement to this placement. Um, it's a switch, it's a little bit of a, uh, considered a as as good program at a lesser cost. So those slots are already filled.
Okay, and if the four slots are filled, sometimes we like hold slots for just in case.
Yeah, my understanding, they're all four are filled already, but students that were moving over.
And I have a question, are these, uh, placements, is this learning being done consistent with the pandemic? Is it distance learning, or are they?
Absolutely, the governor's rules applied to every institution of our education.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, nine zero. Thanks, Mrs. Stratton. Uh, I think we're at committee reports, and I think we'll go to Mr. Japina, Athletic Committee.
Thanks, Dave. Um, we just, uh, I mean, as we all know, athletics has sort of been put on hold with everything else. Um, but, um, we've had some good media coverage recently. We have forty one of our students who are going on to play at the college level, um, hopefully this fall. Um, if everybody follows Notre Dame. Um, you know, and they open up in the fall, and I think our kids will be playing this fall. But, um, the, uh, we've had a, just a whole bunch of media coverage around some of the success that our athletes have achieved. And I've asked Tom to quantify that for us, um, if he could, to, uh, show at least the finance or grants and aids that some of these athletes might be getting as they move on to the next level. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Japina. Uh, Business Functions Committee, Mr. Aaron's.
Uh, yeah, we'll be having a meeting, um, prior to the voting meeting next week. Uh, we may have to adjust the agenda a little bit because it seems that there are some more uncertainties about the, um, budget as we, as we finish off. Um, we'll, we'll see how that plays out. Um, but other than that, uh, nothing to report.
Excuse me, Hunter, do, did you mention a meeting next week?
If I did, I apologize because I meant next month prior to the voting meeting. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I think that's the twenty third of June. Let me, yes, the twenty third of June.
So I thought it was June ninth.
Ann's right, it's June ninth. Oh, my goodness.
Prior to the workshop.
Really cattywampus. No, I think the workshop meeting is the sixteenth. Then the ninth, there's a standalone meeting that'll have six o'clock via Zoom.
Okay. Is that business function, Hunter?
Ann, Ann's right, Ann's right. Yes, that's business functions, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Thanks, you, thanks, Mr. Aaron's. Uh, Curriculum Committee, Dr. McLendon.
It's recommended that the Board School Directors approves the following Curriculum Committee items in agreement with Reading Area Community College to continue to offer dual enrollment to students of Exeter Township Senior High for the twenty 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 one school year. Tuition rate is ninety nine dollars per credit, the same as last year, and the students are responsible for paying for the credits.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, nine zero. Thanks, Mrs. Mc, Dr. McLendon. Is there anything else that you want to report as part of your?
I, well, I'll just report on the meeting that we had, um, last Tuesday, May twelfth. We just voted on it, but Dr. Winters went over, um, the agreement with RAC, and you have an attachment. And also in the, um, minutes that Mary Ann sent out was a list of all the courses. And basically that was the same as last year, I think with one additional course. But most of the meeting, um, uh, last week was the teacher sharing what they're doing and how they're delivering instructions to students. So I was gonna say a lot more about it, but, uh, in the interest of time, I would suggest that you go onto, um, the minutes, and there are links to the presentations that the teachers gave. I'll just say there you're doing an amazing and creative, uh, job with, you know, what they're giving to our students. It's not just videotaping, you know, a lesson. They are really engaging the students and, you know, making it fun and like there's a math uh, with the, um, Dreambox math competition, the librarian, um, had interactive, uh, lessons and band teacher. But when you get a chance, go and 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 look at, look at what they're doing, science experiments, and then they get feedback. Um, like students are taking pictures of, you know, having done the experiment and giving the teachers feedback. It's just, I was really, uh, impressed, really impressed with our teachers. Um, so I'll just keep it at that and hope that you go look at the links on the, uh, on the minutes. And then our next meeting's June sixteenth, so that's the third, that's, don't we usually meet the second Tuesday? Because I think that's what we were just talking about with you, Hunter, but it's gonna be a third Tuesday. Oh, do we push the date back? Is that what it was? Okay, so our next meeting, curriculum meeting is June sixteenth, and at that what? Okay, and so at that meeting, Dr. Winters is gonna address the summer regression and plans for next year uh, with professional development and curriculum, curriculum and instruction. Okay, I'm done now.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Uh, Facilities Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Uh, nothing to report, as I said last week, uh, we'll be, um, talking about the updated A E M contract um, at the June meeting, so nothing for tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Uh, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Um, Policy Committee, nothing to report. Student Functions Committee, Mrs. Stratton.
Um, we are having a formerly known as over the fence committee meeting. Not committee, but meeting on Thursday at nine A M, so that's one. I know Ann has some great things that she'd like to share, uh, but before we get to that, I was kind of reflecting during the meeting on, uh, Mr. Hathaway's presentation. And, um, about it, it seems like, um, in order for him to move forward in his plans, although we can't take a vote, um, that he might, and and I think he's still on the call that maybe he would like to say something, but I would, you know, from his presentation, I think that maybe some guidance is needed for him. Um, I'm just, if he goes out and advertises and then we don't support, uh, tips, um, that could cause some problems as well, some angry parents if they sign their kids up and then they have to refund their money, I think is what he said. So, um, I don't know if we can have a discussion, um, just kind of get people's thoughts without taking a vote and kind of see where we're at. I support, support tips, always have, always will.
I support tips as well, and I think it's something that our students need this summer, for sure.
Yeah.
I support tips as well. Um, I think we definitely need him this summer. And I think there's no issue with us allowing our teachers to advertise, especially since it would have to be in the next two weeks. I believe we only have left of instruction, so I say, yeah, let's go for it.
I personally think it's a no brainer. It's absolutely, let's, let's do it.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
This year, it it's needed, given the, the so-called double whammy or whatever illustration you want to use. It's especially needed this summer.
So I I certainly support, oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Hunter, I, I think we have at least a majority of our board so far, so feel free to comment.
Well, I I guess, based on that, that there's already a majority, I guess my one concern would be, um, I think we want to vet and work through what the cost associated would be with moving from the three hundred students to I think what Matt was suggesting was potentially opening it up to more if the board would be receptive to that. Um, I think we need to be careful about I think we need to be careful about adding any more expenditures at this point. And I, I just think that we're just going to have to consider that as we move forward.
Hey, Hunter, we would certainly be willing to cap it if three hundred's a concern. That's how the contract was written before. I'd hate to turn children away from Teachers in the Parks, especially if there is any interest at the secondary level to include that. But in the contract, three hundred, and it would just take discussion to determine who else we could serve.
Because I think we have budgeted right now for three hundred students, as I understand it. So going beyond that is where we would be upgrading the costs associated with what the district is funding to parents.
Matt, I guess I have a.
Or subsidizing to parents.
Yeah, I guess I have a question too. I mean, let's just say, and I don't anticipate this, but let's just say we only had a hundred and fifty students sign up. Would there be any change in the cost to the district as a result of that?
Um, the way that the original contract was written was that the district could pay a flat fee and then any overages would actually fall on the part, the the hosting party. So no, in the event there'd be under three hundred, we would be willing to accept the, you know, any risk or overdrilling that wasn't going to be compensated, so we never negotiated the other way either. For example, last year we had spent way more title dollars. And so the district got first dibs on all those title dollars, so we were going to end up short thousands of dollars on the other side of that equation. And we were going to have to eat that because of the way that the contract was written. So I guess my thought is unless, unless the district is willing to host its own programming and control the risk, the contract is written such that we would accept, you know, all of the risk. And, you know, in the event that you didn't pay anything over that three hundred children, we would have to eat that cost. Or if we, if we have all title students, for example, all the titles go to Exeter first, and then we would just have to eat those extra title costs that can't be given first.
But if, if, if there was, let's say, a severe lack of enrollment and you didn't have to hire as many teachers as you thought you might, would have had to, and you, obviously you pay them on an hourly basis. Would, would you pass along those savings to the school district?
Um, I think that would certainly be discussion. I mean, actual costing is what every other district is doing when they get to control their own payroll. They get to control their own insurances. For us, like, we're paying a flat rate for insurance. We're truthfully paying a ton in workers' comp insurance. And our working's comp insurance is based, doesn't, isn't determined by how many children enroll. So I would, I mean, my, my goal for this would be that the district could host its own programming and truly control its own costs. But in the subcontracting scenario, we have, we're going to have to, you know, assume a lot of risk here and pay a lot upfront in insurances especially. And it's the same cost for insurance because we, we're getting into those policies right now on the anticipation of so many teachers.
I guess one of my questions too about the insurances, you know, considering the fact that they're not, the teachers aren't actually meeting directly with students. They're not, you know, in, in an environment where there could be some potential harm or liability, injury, so, so forth. You know, is the insurance the same? Is it as necessary?
The thing that, that is hurting communities and schools in Pennsylvania versus teachers in the parks, communities and, and schools is a much larger organization. So the program previously was absorbed into their much larger policies. So the costs, even though they're less risk, are brand new for teachers in the parks, the entity. So those are brand new things that we don't have the, the the scale, you know, to absorb it into something bigger. That is our entire policy is picking up these teachers. So the, the costs are actually more. For example, in some cases, we're going to be paying more workers' comp insurance on a paycheck than we are the actual paycheck to that teacher because of the number of employees that we have.
Any additional questions for, for Matt?
Matt, I, I have one question. Do you, so the students that enroll in there, are they the ones that are usually recommended by teachers or counselors? Or can anybody attend?
We've always, we've always had it open to everybody because we believe that there's a stigma about summer learning. And we believe that if you offer programs in a remedial way, that the children in them recognize that. That doesn't mean that we don't hyper-focus our efforts. We've more than doubled our title enrollment in the last few years because of the efforts of our reading specialists and our reading administrators. So we hyper-focus on the children that need it most, but we offer it to all because the research shows all children slide. It's just that those with existing deficits, that, that their problems compound even more.
My other thought would be that I would hope that we could do some kind of a link out to families to let them know about this. Done that in the past to let people know that tips will be offered this summer, you know, it's going to be a little bit different, but it will be offered that people can get their kids signed up for it and, and access all the wonderful things that it has to offer.
Matt and I have had some initial conversations via email. I'll, I'll follow up as a result of the meeting tonight. And, you know, work with Melissa Devlin, who's our liaison with tips with the district to, you know, do what we need to do to, to help those advertising efforts.
Thank you.
We're excited, very excited for this opportunity. Thank you very much. If it happens, fantastic. Our, our group agreed that it's a lot of risk for a small organization like ours. But I think in these times, everyone needs to do everything they can.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, we're going to move on to.
Sorry.
Local, give another question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll make it quick. I just want to thank the three moms running Adopt and Exeter Twenty Twenty Graduate Program. Noel Lawman, Tanya Nguyen, and Lauren Carpeau. Around two-thirds of the senior class have been adopted already. They're also planning graduation celebrations, like Light the Night Blue for Grad Week, multiple giveaways that are thanks to our community and some other special stuff. This has been a very special program for our seniors. And if you need confirmation of that, please read an amazing article in the Exeter Talon written by a very talented journalist by the name of Simone Miller called "I'm Glad Senior Year Was Canceled." Lastly, I'd like to thank a seniors mom, Denise Benfield. Earlier in our school year, seniors were able to purchase senior T-shirts which were distributed to them last week, but unfortunately some did not purchase them. So Denise has volunteered to collect orders to pin in a second round of T-shirts for seniors. Right now she has fifty people interested. All orders must be in by May twenty-fifth, and you can find that information on my Exeter Township High School Parent Community Facebook page. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for mentioning my daughter too. She, I appreciate it.
And actually, to that end, we have a, we have a district newsletter that will be going out towards the end of May. And, you know, Hury, I may very well reach out to your daughter and see if she'd be interested in letting us put that article on the district newsletter as well. I think it'd be great, great to have a student article in there. I think that would be wonderful.
Good stuff. All right.
Mrs. Stratton, anything else for student functions? I'll take that as a no.
All right, I shook my head no.
I'm looking at my agenda. I don't see, I don't see any faces right now, so.
Oh, sorry.
Technology Committee, Mr. Miller.
I have nothing to report. Just, once again, those guys are doing a great job. I, I have no, no complaints. I'm just very happy that our kids are still learning and they're, you know, everything is continuing the way it should be. That's all this, that's all this really is great about this whole thing.
Thank, thank God for the tech department. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Exeter Ed Foundation, Dr. Herring.
Oh, I'm sorry. My internet just off. Oh, sorry about that. Okay. Really quick, ECF is pleased to report that we're donating the following via EITC funds raised. Nine thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for a laser engraver cutter for the senior high school. One thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for a shed kit for the residential systems maintenance class project. Three thousand six hundred for interactive whiteboards for the music room at Lorraine and Awatton Creek. Five thousand seven hundred for the author visit for Lorraine Awatton Creek and Jacksonwell. Two thousand for Watten Creek's NASA e-mission. Fifteen hundred will also be included for tips. This total represents a twenty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollar donation. In addition to this, thirty-two hundred in teacher mini-grants is in the process of being voted on. Lastly, ECF with the Alumni Association installed the first bench at the Eagles Nest on Sunday. And a second bench is in the works that will go beside the bench that was installed Sunday. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Burke's Career and Tech Center, Dr. McClendon.
We met, we met last month on April twenty-second. They reported that there are, they have an increase in number of students enrolled for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year. And a few months ago, I talked to you about the program that they started for seniors. Typically, the students who enroll in the CTC come in tenth grade and their three-year programs, but they started this program. Where seniors can come in for one year, so they have forty-one students enrolled in that program. They're going to, they're going to be doing a virtual tour. Maybe they did that already. I'm not sure, but a virtual tour for eighth graders. They used to go in and talk to the students about the program, but they're going to do a virtual tour. They started, on April sixth is when they started their new content delivery to students. At that time, they were about eighty to eighty-five percent overall attendance. And they were doing similar things to what we're doing as far as the counselors and pupil services reaching out and also reaching out to the sending schools. So hopefully we meet next week. I'm hoping to see that number like hundred percent would be good, but close to that at least. I was interested to know how they're doing this delivery through the, you know, online delivery because, as you know, most of, a lot of what they do, students do, is hands-on. So we, during our meeting, we got to see what some of the teachers are doing. Well, first of all, they're, they're, they decided to do more theory. And hopefully when we get, they get back to school, then they'll do more hands-on, but they're doing a lot more theory. But some of the teachers have found ways such as cosmetology. The students have a mannequin head where they can work on that, and then they'll take pictures and upload those. Like the teacher tells them what to do, then she, the teacher can look at what they've done, see if they're doing it right. And they have students who are working on hands-on, things that are within, you know, consideration for safety. Like Dr. Pratt said, you know, he wouldn't tell the students, go put brakes on your mom's car. But, you know, other things that they might do landscaping, things like that. They're still working on, they're working on two homes. The first home is just about complete. It just needed some inside tile work, touch-up painting and landscaping. And that home then is going to be ready to put on the market soon. They're going to use their market, students with a marketing program in conjunction with the Realtor to try to get that house sold. And then they may have to get subcontractors to, because they're also simultaneously working on this second home. The, the next home that they're going to start. The new welding building is almost finished, so that, you know, would be opening up soon. And I have mentioned this before, but the welding program, they expanded that, and that is one program through the adult education that brings in revenue. Steam camp was canceled for the summer was canceled. They have a summer internship program that was reduced from eight weeks to five weeks. And I just want, Dr. Joe Hackman, I liked something she said, so I'm going to borrow that from her. She said, to keep in mind, you know, we hear all schools are closed, schools are closed, when are schools going to open? She said facilities are closed and schools are open. And so, you know, that's how we have to look at that. I like that. She said that. So there, our next meeting then will be next week, May, May twenty-seventh. So that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dr. McClendon.
Sharon, can I, can I just say something? I really appreciate the passion that you had for BCTC. I had an opportunity this week. The, the senior that I adopted was dealing with or working through BCTC. And I called down there on his behalf, and they were absolutely amazing. And, and the passion that you bring to creating awareness amongst the board for the opportunities that are available at BCTC are amazing. So I appreciate that you do that and that you share that information because it's a real career, career opportunities for many people. So thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. And one thing I did forget is that I said that they're going to, with the first and second year students, they're hoping to give them more of the hands-on. There's discussion about how to get the seniors, the students who are in their third year, and they're maybe missing out on getting some certification or hours. So there's some talk about maybe bringing them back first quarter or trying to figure out some kind of way to make up for any deficit that they, they, you know, have had because they didn't finish the senior year, you know, with the, they're getting the theory, but the hands-on. And for some of that, you need hours to get certifications, so they're looking at doing something with those seniors who already have graduated. But thank you, Mike. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dr. McClendon. BCIU Board, there will be a board meeting this Thursday evening on Zoom. And the only other thing is I would like to remind board members to vote for the school board representatives for the three-year terms by getting on the survey that was provided by the IU. So if you haven't done, done that yet, please, please, please do that before the due date, which I think is maybe June fifth. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Fidler.
Nothing to report.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Japina.
Yeah, so I would like to defer to my right honorable colleague, the gentleman from Ole Turnpike Road, who could perhaps give us an update since I've been tied up in my COVID work at the hospital, but Hunter's been paying attention. So Hunter, any updates?
Well, um, you know, I think there's three big things. First of all, I just want to thank the township for their work. And that's going to be continuing with our high school administration to try and understand and wrap our minds around how this parade situation is going to work. And I know Dr. Phillips referenced that at the beginning of our, our meeting this evening. So I just wanted to thank them publicly for that. And beyond that, I know that the board of supervisors is close to selecting a candidate for township manager. And I think where they had last left it was either making an announcement about a candidate either at the meeting next week or the following meeting. So we'll be looking for that, and I think our expectation would be to sit down with the next township manager and, and build that relationship further as the superintendent and the township manager can work one-on-one with one another as we move forward and, and as we tackle some of these issues. And then beyond that, one issue that I've been sharing with the administration is there is consideration for a major subdivision behind, basically where behind Walmart is. I, I can't recall what the name of the subdivision is, but we're going to be, I think, monitoring that as it goes in because it has the potential, I think, to increase the capacity of the development behind Walmart by about forty percent. And I think the impact could be a couple dozen households. And that's something that we just want to be aware of as we're planning the needs for our future staff levels in some of the elementary schools over there. So that's just something we're going to be continuing to keep an eye on. And I think there are requirements in the second-class township code that would require them to make formal notice to us. That major subdivision is only in a preliminary phase because I don't think the final subdivision proposal has been submitted yet. But, you know, as we go forward, I, I think the administration is going to be able to make comment on that. That's all I have.
Thanks for that.
Thanks, Hunter.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Since our next formal meeting will be later in June, I'd like to publicly thank all the staff, the teachers, the administrators that have really performed above and beyond in what is certainly not a normal school year. No one would have envisioned this when we got together in August to start the year out, that we would be where we are now. But the, the adaptability, the passion, the creativity that went into getting us to where we're at right now certainly needs to be commended. I also would like to prematurely congratulate our seniors
I also would like to prematurely congratulate our seniors, since, again, the next time we meet, they will have already graduated. So again, I could say the same things about them when they came to school the first few days. I'm sure they didn't envision their senior year ending like this. But again, the adaptability, the, the grit, if you will, that they show, and I think will prove them well later in life. I would like to share two areas from one of my conferences that I was on this afternoon from the United Way. They have asked that we present to our communities the idea of the 211 phone call. It's an area of information and referral service that will help connect people to services such as housing, shelter, food, a lot of other services. So it's the, as you would say, 911, it's called 211. They have a lot of services to provide with anything and everything that people need in our community. The other service that they're providing is called Bright by Text. It provides childhood experts to support healthy childhood development by texting. The messages will be two to four times per week, delivered both in English and Spanish, and it will cover the areas of birth to eight-year-old children. So it's a service to just support parents in a time of need. That is my report. Dave, I could just, I, I'd like to thank Dr. Phillips and the administration for staying engaged with Berks County, BCIU at the state level, which can get very complicated and very political at the federal level, and also keeping up the stream of information out to our parents as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Before we adjourn, we do, I do want to check in with Joe Way. Joe, do we have any additional comments or communications from members of the public, if you're still on, Joe?
Yes, we do, Dr. Hamburger. I have two. The first one is from Mary Beth Eckenrod, 119 West 35th Street. It says, "With the retirement of Karen Grab and Barb Creel, the district is losing a ton of institutional knowledge. I hope someone recognizes that and takes the time to try and gather it."
Second comment comes from Jason Mel, 401 Pass Under Drive. It was indicated in the April 21st budget presentation that the classroom aid cut by one hour would have $105,000 impact on the budget in less wage and benefit costs. The board tonight is indicating a $23,000 figure. Can someone please clarify the discrepancy?
The discrepancy is that the instructional aids are still going to be cut by the one hour. It's the reading aids that will not be cut by the one hour. That is the discrepancy.
There were no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Way. At this time, are there any board members who, who would like to be heard?
David, if I might, I got an email that I'd like to read. I asked this person if I could use his name. He said no because he didn't want to get hammered on social media. It's very short. It just says, "Dear Mr. Japina, thank you for replacing the track. I walk on it after, I, I walk on it as often as I can. I've paid taxes in Exeter for 60 years. It's money well spent."
Thanks, Mr. Japina. Any, any other, any other board members who would like to be heard at this time?
I just want to say real quickly, because I know we all want to be done, that I appreciate all the board members that are here, the administrators. But I feel like we can talk about topics that are important to us, and we could do it in a civil manner. And although we may not agree with each other, I feel like we hear each other out, and I very much appreciate that, so I just want to say thank you.
I would agree. Any, any additional comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, I've been gone for a while now, all of a sudden I'm jumping in. I do also want to make a special mention to Hunter. I know that he has done a lot of heavy lifting. He has worked very hard. He's taken some crap unfairly from people, but he is doing the job in the right way, and I am just thankful for his work as well as the rest of the board as well, and the administration too.
Well said, Mike.
And Mike, I just want to, I just want to comment. We know you haven't been around all that much as a result of your work with COVID, but we really do appreciate the work that you're doing and all the healthcare professionals at this time, and also appreciate the updates when they're available to learn more about what's happening in our county systems, our health systems. So thanks for, thanks for your work and, and for being out there and, and keeping our community safe.
Thank you. As I said, as an administrator, I don't, I don't wear the capes. I just keep them working for the people who do wear them.
Well said. At this time, any other comments at this time?
Can I, can I just say thank you to Mike quick? And I just really want to make clear that that work and, and what we've been able to accomplish would not have been possible without Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, and Anne and Christine. They were all instrumental. And Sue, while she was still here as well, they were all instrumental in really seeing that process through.
Thanks, Hunter.
Thank you, Hunter.
If there are no further comments, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
We'll move.
Second. Okay, we're adjourned, folks. Thanks. Be safe. Have a nice night.
Night.
What's left of it.
Everyone.
Good night, folks.